You hear me? Okay, there you go. Okay, everyone, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I guess it just needs to be woken up. It's working good now. Please note, the council's in full attendance, and I do want to recognize that it's Mr. Jalapaska's birthday today. So, happy birthday, Mr. Jalapaska.
Birthday, birthday time.
We do appreciate you.
I forgot my candle.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We won't ask you how many. Okay. And I want to welcome all the citizens here to our meeting this evening. First item on our agenda is items from council, and we do have a proclamation we want to take care of quickly. So, I'll have the city attorney read that.
Sure. This is a proclamation recognizing Municipal Court Week, signed by the mayor, and it reads in part, "Whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting the quality of life in Texas, whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. Whereas the City of Victoria is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us, and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law, enact in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. Whereas the city council recognizes that the Constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the City of Victoria Municipal Court in complying with those legal requirements. Now therefore, I, Paul Palos, Mayor of the City of Victoria, do hereby proclaim the week of November 6th through November 10th as Municipal Court Week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the Municipal Court of Victoria, and is signed this day by Mayor Paul Palos."
We did a mock trial today, and our judge was wanting to just update everybody on how that went today.
I just wanted to let everyone know, we have taken some additional steps to show kind of what we're doing, some of the positive changes we're making here in the municipal court, and we had not one but two mock trials today. It looked a little bit different than it does now. It was filled. In fact, we had people standing. It was so full in here. And we had the eighth graders at Trinity Episcopal School serve as prosecutors and defense attorneys and defendants and witnesses. And we had, I've spent about six weeks, spending three to four hours with them a week, kind of training them and working with them on their direct examinations and their cross-examinations, their opening statements and closing arguments, and they did a phenomenal job. It was largely successful because of the staff here at the municipal court. They visited with the prosecutor, they visited with our detective Collins over there, our bailiff, asking all kinds of very fascinating questions, I can assure you. We were super proud. We would like to expand it next year, but I just wanted to let you know it's something positive that's happening at the municipal court, and we had a really great turnout and support for that program. So, thank you for recognizing this as Municipal Court Week. We think them being involved in this mock trial really does promote the idea of traffic safety and how important it is to follow the rules of the road, and so we thank you for recognizing us and declaring this Municipal Court Week. So, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
We also have some amazing staff members, and I think Tiffany's going to introduce everyone for you.
Yes, we have Kristi, we have Sylvia, Erin, and Maria, and...
Wonderful. Okay. We're still under items from council, and the next item, of course, Ms. Scott had requested to discuss Victoria, City of Victoria's role in housing. Would you like to take it from there?
Yeah, I'm just, I've got a couple of things to say. There was an editorial in The Advocate on October 29th, and part of it said that the housing crisis, the housing crisis, their words, "is somehow out of sight and out of mind for many Victoria City and County elected officials." And it ends with saying that, look, local leaders, we need local leaders who will recognize the problems and rally people around solving them. This starts with elected officials representing all of their constituents. And I found myself wondering, what role the city itself, the tax-assessing body, which we are the council members, what role the city plays in this? And I really have thought about it a lot. I have talked to Congressman Ferenthal's office, by the way, and asked if that buyout money that we continue to try to ask for, I put in another plug for that. I don't have a, here's the check, but I just wanted to say that. But I don't believe that our city provides housing in terms of, we don't provide walls and roofs for our residents. And I don't think that we provide taxpayer-funded money to our residents, whether we give it to them directly or whether we would give it to VOAD for housing. I'm just not aware that our taxpayers want us to be doing that. But that's sort of the question. Do they want us to do that? What role, on the other side, should individuals play, not the city, but individuals pay in paying for their housing? Does that answer change if they don't have insurance? These are questions that I think really need to be thought about, especially in light of us as an elected body, what our role is versus what the role is of our citizens, and what the role is of me as a citizen versus me as a council person. Because I think as a citizen, I'm as saddened as every one of us is about what our, some of our residents are dealing with, but I just really feel like I have to balance that with my elected responsibilities. I'd also like to be careful as we look at our local regulations and ordinances to see if there are any that can be changed, but I really don't want us to relax them to a situation that we're going to be sorry that we did in the future. I don't want us to come up with a short-term solution and end up with problems down the road. And, you know, then basically, if federal dollars become available to us for housing, how does that change things? And those are kind of my thoughts. I have a lot more. I've been thinking about it for a while, but I don't know whether we can discuss that to any great extent today, and I think that there are some people here that can give us some information about the housing problems that we have right now, to the extent that they know about it. And I know that later in the agenda, the Developmental Services Department does have program, and I'm encouraged by that, but the numbers are small for the number of people that will be impacted.
I'm curious that this was on the agenda. I picked up last Monday my copy of the emergency management plan. There's an annex or a section in there titled Recovery. Talks about how to set up the recovery of, from any disaster, right? Not just hurricane-related, but a lot of the provisions I found in here, I was surprised to find. And so surprised, in fact, that I asked if I could sit with the mayor on Friday and go through them, because I don't know if it's correctly how we want to be doing things. I know it's not what we're doing, such as individual assessment teams that are supposed to go out to businesses and residences and fill out some paperwork and make sure we get those people matched up with either FEMA or other resources to get their homes repaired, their businesses repaired, make sure they understand everything. That's not something we currently do, but it's in our plan.
We have, and since we talked, just, we have done, there is some of that that exists, but we continue, I'm sorry.
And we're setting up a meeting for the week of November...
22nd or something, yeah.
Yeah, somewhere in there, that week of Thanksgiving, that we're going to sit down and go through some of these questions and stuff that we found in there, because I don't know that that provides any more answer, but there is a plan out there to do some of it, and some's being done, some's not.
I think it's a great concept, and I think it'll take us several meetings to go through that and make sure we're doing what we're supposed to do, and if we're not, if we don't need to do something, take it out of there, stuff like that. It's a great idea. I did ask the folks from FEMA, and forgive me, I don't know who they are, I see our, the voluntary rep, who hears from FEMA, raise your hand. Don't be shy. We have three of you? Okay, wonderful. Could you give us an update, right now, just in general, about the numbers and how you're doing and how you're serving our citizens, if that's acceptable? We may have a few questions.
How are you? Thank you for inviting me. My name is Carla Mongan, and I work for FEMA. I work out of, actually, out of the Region 6 Denton Office, but out here on the ground, I am the voluntary agency liaison group supervisor, and I have about 17 counties that I'm overseeing. First of all, I want to tell you, y'all are doing an amazing job. I work with a lot of these organizations on the ground level, and you're doing amazing. They really truly are out there working, and they have their residents first and foremost of all. So, as of right now, we have 19,477 residents, valid registrations for FEMA in Victoria County. We have dispersed $10,984,544, $984,544.49. That's what we have dispersed as of today. That's in housing and ONA, which is, housing can be several different things. It could be rental assistance, it could be repair fund, you know, repair monies to repair their home, it could be all sorts of different things for our housing assistance. For ONA, ONA is another program. So, I'm going to kind of go over the sequence of delivery for you all, so that way y'all kind of understand what the sequence is. First of all, FEMA cannot come in anywhere, in any state, and do anything without the request of the state. It has to be a federally declared disaster, and then we come in on behalf of the state. So, we work with our state partners on what they want and how they see things to move forward in a disaster. I have a state vow that I work with, Deanna Stemmick, she's a very, very amazing lady. Y'all have an amazing state vow here in Texas, and so I work with her one-on-one, helping the local communities develop a long-term recovery for individuals after they have received insurance, they may receive FEMA assistance, whatever resources they've received, if they still have unmet needs. What I do is I work on the local ground level with all of our nonprofit faith-based community organizations and develop a long-term recovery group for your county, because as you all know, we're only here for a certain amount of time. We're here, we come in, and then we all pull out, just like a lot of all other volunteer organizations. So, what I do is I bring in training, education, whatever it needs to be for our long-term recovery group, to get them up and going and running, and so you all can assist your own residents for their unmet needs. You all do have a long-term recovery that is being developed here in Victoria County, a lot of amazing people, and they're doing a great job. We're in the process of now getting everything straightened out, hiring case managers to work one-on-one with the residents, finding out what resources they've already received, what resources they still need, and how to move their cases forward. The first thing I really want to let y'all know, though, our numbers are a moving target. Our numbers, every day, is a moving target. We have people that are in TSA today that may not be in TSA tomorrow. As of today, I think we have 174 households in TSA. TSA is our Temporary Shelter Assistance Program, that is our hotel program. So, these families that still cannot get into their house as of right now, we still have the TSA program going on. Understand that a lot of families don't want to live in hotels. I truly understand that foremost, because that's what I do. When I'm out here, I'm usually in hotels. But until we can get their home safe, sanitary, and functional and back up to where they can get back in there, our TSA program at least gives them a roof over their head and safe, sanitary, and functional place to live.
Carla, you said 174?
174 households.
Are they all in Victoria, or?
Excuse me, it's actually 158.
158.
These numbers change on a daily basis.
I get some of those reports.
Generally going down, although once in a while we see them pop back up. 158 households.
Households.
And that is Victoria County, not just the city.
Oh, it's the whole county? And are they mostly in Victoria, or do some of them still out of town? Do you know? That's okay.
That's a question I can't answer.
We don't know, but we would, one would assume that they're mostly Victoria, City of Victoria residents, but it is Victoria County numbers.
But that's not an indication of how many are uninhabitable, you would say, right? I mean, because I think we have a lot of people that have been absorbed into families and friends.
Correct. I was going to say, you've got a lot of your residents that are living with families and friends. They could be staying somewhere else in a rental property until they get their home fixed. FEMA assistance, we do help renters and we do assist homeowners. So, a lot of people say that renters can't get assistance. That's not correct. We do help renters, we do help homeowners. First thing is they have to apply. Our registration date ends as of right now on November 30th. That is our deadline to register. So, we need to make sure, if you have no family, if you have families out there that still have not registered, please tell them to register. Even if they have insurance, please tell them to register, because there could be some things our insurance doesn't cover that FEMA can assist with. We always want to try to find a way to say yes, never say no.
Carla, what is your roughly decline rate? You said you had 19,000 people come sign up? Or they were, that's 19,000 eligible?
Those are eligible, 19,000 families.
That doesn't include people who are declined?
Yes.
Okay.
So, our decline rate, non-eligible status, isn't really that much more from our valid registrations.
That's really not, oops, excuse me. We had 19,480 registrations in Victoria County and 19,477. So, we're talking about three.
Yes, that were valid.
Three, that everything else was valid, and those aren't necessarily declinations. They could be a matter of just not having the proper information or the proper identification, those kinds of things, but it's...
That's another thing that we want to make sure, that if residents gets a denial letter, there could be any reason why they get a denial letter. Please tell them to read the letter, contact FEMA, 800-621-3362, or go to the DRC. Find out why they got denied. It could be just a documentation that they may need. It may be that they have insurance, so we deny them right now until we get their insurance paperwork to find out what their insurance paid them and what we can assist them with, because we cannot duplicate any type of benefits. We are governed by the Stafford Act law, so we have to make sure that, like any local, county, state, federal program, we have to stay within our guidelines, so we can't duplicate benefits for our residents. So, we need to make sure that if they did get insurance, find out what their insurance paid them, and there still may be things FEMA can assist them with. So, that's our, registration closes on November 30th. SBA, I cannot stress this enough, SBA is very, very, very important. We have two types of ONA, Other Needs Assistance, that we work with in FEMA. The state of Texas does their own ONA program here, but we still assist them with it. So, once a resident applies for FEMA, they're going to supply all their documentation. If they're what they call FIT, Failed Income Test, they automatically get put into what we call Other Needs Assistance. If they don't automatically fail the income test, then they're going to get a SBA packet. It is very important for them to fill that SBA packet out. If they, they do not have to accept the loan, but they need to fill the paper out and send it back in. If they don't fill the paper out and send it back in, then they're saying right then and there, they don't need any other assistance. They don't need our assistance. But if they fill it out, send it back in, there's still things that FEMA may be able to assist them with. So, it's very important that they fill that SBA. A lot of our residents doesn't understand that.
There was a lot of confusion, because it's small business development, and people see that, and, well, I don't have a business, so I don't do it. So, I know there was some criticism at last Friday's meeting about, change the name of it, which I kind of agree with, but neither here nor there, I guess.
I've often, I've often thought that not only is SBA, or Small Business Administration, a misnomer, but FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, people often think of us as the ones who are the first responders, that we go in and pick people off their rooftops, and that is not what we are, that's not our mission, that's not what we do. We do assist in that, in that capacity, but that's not our main mission.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, people understand that FEMA's there to keep you out of harm's way, just in your, the worst living conditions, whatever it takes to get you into where you have a clean environment and decent living conditions, not necessarily as an insurance company to replace your home, and I know people get confused and upset by that, but that's not what you are.
It's safe, sanitary, and functional.
Safe, sanitary, and functional, okay.
And so, that's, some of these are Temporary Shelter Assistance Program. Right now, the deadline for it is November 27th. The state will reevaluate it, see what their, the numbers are and where, how many families we still have in TSA, then they will either request for an extension, or, you know, they won't request one. But as of right now, they went ahead and extended it past the holidays, because we want to make sure every resident has a safe, sanitary, and functional place to stay through the holidays. Then it comes down to the Long-Term Recovery Group, and this is where me and my vows, I have different vows all over these counties that are working. And what we do is we go in and we educate the community, faith-based nonprofit, community organizations, some of them I call our career codes, like the Elks, the Lions, and explain to them what long-term recovery is, what the needs are in the community, and how we can get them involved into the long-term recovery, because all disasters start local and end local. When we all leave, it's going to go right back down to the local county and communities. So, we go out there, there's a lot of these organizations that don't even know they have disaster grants in their programs. So, I go out and I talk with all the faith-based partners, let them know what information I know, and see how they can develop this recovery group. And then, like I said, we have case managers that are getting involved, they'll work one-on-one with the residents, and then that's how they'll move the cases forward. One thing I really want to stress also is to make sure that we control false expectations. You know, we don't want to make sure, we need to make sure that we control them, because long-term recovery is long-term. These families aren't going to get back in their homes in two weeks. Some of them may, some of them may not. Every resident's disaster damages are different. You know, it could be minor to major, so everybody's going to have a disaster recovery plan, and it's all going to depend on that resident, because what we want to do is make sure we empower the resident through the Long-Term Recovery Group to move the process forward. It's their disaster, and we want to make sure we empower them, not only for this disaster, but for whenever something else happens down the road. There will always be some disaster somewhere, whether it's got to do with death, disaster, whatever it may be, and this way it gives them, puts them on a higher scale to handle the next disaster that they come into.
Okay. Let me, council, you'll have any questions while they're here? Okay.
Could I add a couple of things to that?
Sure.
You were talking about, I think you referred to it as, emergency management teams or individual assessment teams that you were talking about, and FEMA has been doing that in Victoria County for two months now. We have teams of people, we call, we use a different term, we call them Disaster Survivors Assistance Teams, but they go out door-to-door, knocking on doors, trying to convince people that they should apply for assistance, regardless of whether they have insurance or not, or how much damage they have. But we've been doing that, and periodically someone will come to us and say, you know, there are families over in that area of town, and most of them don't speak English, and most of them don't know that they can possibly qualify for assistance, and we will take the general area, the specific address, and send our teams out there. So, we really, we have been doing that for two months now.
Good.
And the mayor has my contact information, if y'all, he got me on a speed dial.
Yeah, well, you're at every meeting I go to, so.
I was going to say, he's got me on a speed dial.
And I appreciate it.
Well, no problem. I enjoy my job, I love what I do, I'm very passionate about what I do. I lost my home in 2007, so I truly know what your residents are going through. I know how hard it is for them to climb back up. You know, Victoria County wasn't built overnight, so it's going to take a while to get it back in, up and going. So, if y'all have any organizations or anywhere y'all would like for me to go out and do a Long-Term Recovery presentation, explain our process, please don't hesitate to call us or one of my vows. We will get them out there, it doesn't matter whether it's in the evening or on weekends. You know, we want to make sure that we tailor to fit your all needs and work with you all on a one-on-one basis.
I have two more minutes of your time.
Thank you very much.
Still two more minutes?
Sure, just two. I'm kidding. It's okay, I'm in no hurry, go ahead.
You're probably aware that the state is involved in the Direct Housing Program with FEMA, and that is where we supply the infamous FEMA trailers, which we no longer call FEMA trailers, we now call them Texas trailers instead. It's a little bit of a different program now than has been done in the past. In the past, FEMA determined who was eligible, bought the MHUs, the manufactured housing units that people refer to as trailers, and other types of rental property that we rent and make available to people. And then FEMA would put the people into these units, and then FEMA would be the landlord and allow them to stay for up to 18 months, and then we'd end up with these old units that are pretty much worthless by then. This is a new program in Texas, and we are determining the eligibility, and we are paying for the trailers, but then we give the trailers to the state, and then the state, and I say trailers, and I mean all types of housing, but we allow the state then to determine which areas get them, who gets them, which families get them, and we are out of the business of, being in the business of manufactured housing units. It's now, it's now in the state's hands, and the state is working with the various municipalities, be it, I don't know if they're working at the level of a city, you would know that, but they are certainly working with the county commissioners everywhere, and to determine where the housing units will go. Our goal is to get people out of the hotels. We've got 158 families in hotels, and it's time, it's time to get them out, but there is a shortage of rental property in this area.
Are you aware that that decision or those trailers have, that's been made by the state, by the GLO or the COG?
I can't speak for the GLO, that's all.
I mean, I've just heard, we're not eligible, and I don't know what that means. You know, we're not eligible for trailers here, that didn't make sense to me, so, okay.
That doesn't make sense to me either, so I would, but I would check with the GLO.
I'll follow up with you guys.
That doesn't make sense, no.
It's just going to be an as-needed basis, and the process is unfortunately, sounds like it's just going a little slow, but it'll be taken care of, okay.
And we can reach out to Ernie and find out.
Yeah, yes, ma'am, Ernie, the director of the DRC, okay.
And we can reach out and find out on them and go from there.
Okay. Counsel, did you? Okay. Thank y'all very much for being here and for that update.
Well, thank you for inviting us, and like I said, if there's anything that we can do, please don't hesitate to reach out. I love getting involved with the local communities, and when I leave, I feel like I'm a local, you know, so.
You are already.
I am, you know, and I am born and raised Texans, so that's, this is my state. Yes, ma'am.
I was just going to ask for a business card so I can contact you.
Yes, ma'am, I can bring them up. We're all living here.
Just give them to him, and he'll give them to us. Thank you, Carla.
Okay. We're still under items from council? Is there anything? Mr. Jalapaska?
We had asked for the rate study. What is the status on it? We still on track for December?
I think it's January. January.
January? Okay.
Water rates?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, that jogged my memory. What about the joint group looking at fire and EMS in City and County? When can we expect a report out on that? We decided, instead of hiring a consultant, that county would supply a couple people, the city would supply a couple people and look at the reimbursement?
Sir, are you waiting on the judge? There's not anything going on with it.
I thought you were waiting on the county judge.
No, he'd asked for some information, and I told him we didn't have it, and so...
Okay. When do we, we negotiate that again in?
19.
19?
19.
I just want to pull D4, please.
So, you want to pull D4, okay. Okay. All right. If there's no other items from council, we'll move into Citizens Communication. If anyone would like to come up and to the podium and just state your name for the record, and as a courtesy, just limit your comments to, try to, five minutes, please.
My name is Tracy Rush, and...
My name is Tracy Rush, and, uh, live at four oh seven New Haven, here in Victoria, and considering what I'm bringing up, it seems kinda insignificant to what I've heard with FEMA, but it is about the golf course, Riverside Golf Course, we are not getting any communications as to what the status is, what the outcome is gonna be, is it gonna open, or is it gonna shut down? There's a lot of rumors out there, and it's disheartening, it's a wonderful place, it's the prettiest course on this, in this whole city, and it would be a shame to let it go, so it would be nice, what I am asking is that, uh, we get, every two weeks, get a communication, you know, a simple email that goes out to the members and lets them know what's going on with the course, is it gonna open, is it not, so we can make a decision? And, but right now I see on here that there is a resolution rejecting all proposals to manage Riverside Golf Course and declaring an effective date, and to me, that don't sound very good, and I don't think it will to any of the members that are still waiting around for it, so if that means that we're gonna hire a management company, or if we are gonna shut it down, it would be nice to know what's going on.
Understood.
Can you give us an answer to that in the paper?
Well, can you, can you stay for the rest of the council meeting, because when we come up for the reject bids, we'll talk about what our proposal is for the golf course.
Okay.
Uh, if not, um, if, if the mayor doesn't mind, uh, our, we're asking counsel, the private companies that bid on it, bid to do a management consulting contract, and, uh, based on those fees, we're asking counsel just to let the city run it and not, of course, it's up to counsel whether they wish to do that or not, but the intent is to open the golf course back up, uh, and I had heard that rumor this weekend that we plan to close it, and that's, that's not the intent, um, so-
Well, I believe the city could probably manage it better than a management company, because it's, you know, it's part of the city, so I think they would have the best interest at heart in the course.
We have a lot of, um, brush down on the golf course, and we're working, we've got a company in there working hard to get that, um, ready to go, so-
Everybody understands that, I mean, the city is really taxed on maintenance, and with all the stuff that's still going on, like I said, this seems kinda piddly, but it's still of interest to a lot of people, so-
I can tell you the Parks Department and, uh, the golf pro sitting at the back, he, they're working hard over there to get it opened back up.
Rolando has been very good at letting us in and checking on our cards and kinda giving us an update, but it would be nice to, you know, get an email or announce it in the paper if we could.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good questions and good points, thank you, sir. Citizens' communication still open?
Good evening, and, uh, happy twenty-first birthday, Councilman Halpeska. I'm Buddy Kamen, and I'm not here, uh, Mr. Goose, to talk about my flags, okay? I'm here to talk to this council, uh, along with, this is Ernestine Hobbs, uh, it's Thomas, excuse me, about shutting down the police, um, firing range, you know, it's way, way overdue to be shut down. I'm concerned about Ernestine Thomas and all the other people that live in their neighborhood at seven oh seven Vine Street, South Vine Street, uh, the lead content, and I came to the city manager some years ago and spoke to her about this concern, not only the concern about the lead that former police chief, uh, told me about, um, Richard did, but I'm also concerned about the noise and all the other that goes on down there, it, it's passed due to be shut down, to give these men and women an indoor range. Now, we have plenty of vacant buildings, this city could've gone out and pioneered, uh, on a lease of some kind, and not have them stand out in the cold and rain, I mean, we all know that the county has now moved their range because of scheduling conflicts, but, you know, I live on Commercial, she lives on South Vine with others, and, you know, we need to move on, and we need to have, uh, a situation where we don't have this lead working its way into our water table, much less into our river, because everyone sitting here knows, or a good majority should know, that where this firing range is and has been for forty-plus years, wouldn't you say?
I would say forty-plus years.
Yeah, was a garbage dump.
Yes.
So when we have a flood there, we're not only getting the fresh lead from all the fire, firing that's been going on for years, but we're also getting the garbage that's being uncovered going into our water table into the river. So let's wake up, let's move forward, let's find a building or find a site, 'cause we also had a site out here at the county airport at one time, I think that structure, or part of that structure, is still there, but, you know, everybody has passions, you know, mine is medicine and law enforcement, that's why back in seventy-one, I along with Charlie Trolofka started the IBPO, because management at this city wouldn't listen about giving these police officers, much less the fire, fire guys, a decent salary, and we still got major upside-down on that issue, uh, classifying the, the cop and the fire guy as the same as the sanitation department. I stood before this council and Miss Garrett, uh, some years ago with the former mayor, had a little shouting match going on, because my deal is, there's not one profession in that city of yours, in your departments, that the husband or the wife says to that spouse, "I hope to see you tomorrow," and I think what's happened across our nation in these past years, and the killing of police officers is a good example, so they need to be separated from the water department or the sanitation department and given a total different salary structure than what they have been given by this city over these many years. So for Ernestine Thomas and all the others that live down there, let's, let's make, uh, let's give these men and women the kinda firing range they need to have, and not in the city limits of Victoria any longer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kamen, thank you, Ms. Thomas, we will certainly take it under advisement. Um, citizens' communication still open, anyone else?
Good evening, council, uh, mayor.
Watch step.
City manager, um, Emilio Reyes, four three Chaparral Drive, Victoria, Texas, President of Victoria Firefighters Association. I just wanted to come up and, uh, you know, there's been a lot of negativity lately over our response to Harvey and being part of the first responders that were out there, and also being involved at state level, at state association, and, uh, the International Association of Firefighters, I've seen, um, what my counterparts are dealing with in other cities that are affected, at a greater part, and, uh, the difficulties that they've had, uh, much greater than we have had, so I think it commends our, uh, team and our managers, not only for fire, police, but, uh, all, all of our departments as far as how we've, uh, come back, literally, sometimes I go down the streets and it's like, did it really have a hurricane here? You know, it's, we've done amazing, you know, and, and, and I just wanna say thank you to the council members, city manager, for supporting the staff, and they need that assistance, and we need that equipment, uh, it was amazing to, during that time, that any requests that were made, we got them, so just wanted to echo that, uh, make sure that citizens know that, you know, we were all out there trying to do our best, and, um, I don't think anybody was prepared for a category four, no matter what the best preparation is for. So, um, I just wanted to speak and talk about that, and also echo some of the things that have happened as far as the state association, um, here for our local firefighters, we had a number that had their homes affected, and also that, um, we were able to, uh, get some financial assistance from the state association for our members, and that was in a total of twenty-two thousand dollars for our members, so it was an amazing, amazing resource that we were able to, uh, to touch in, and also we, we received about three thousand dollars, uh, in grants to some of our firefighters from the International Association of Firefighters, um, so it was great to be, uh, a part of this organization, and was able to help our membership during their time of need, and, uh, you know, that, that all goes back to the leadership that we have in place and making sure that, that we have this stuff going on in the background and assisting us during our time of need. Um, one of the first phone calls that I got was from the general president of the International Association of Firefighters at nine o'clock in the morning after Harvey struck, and, uh, he said, "I'm on a plane, I got Austin, Houston, San Antonio, members ready to come down, so y'all let us know what y'all need, we're here to assist in any way." My answer to him was, "We're ready, we don't need anything right now, you know, um, if you need to move further down, there's people who are worse, worsely affected than we are, we're kinda taking care of our own right now," so that was, that was a great, great thing to be able to say, so, um, it just goes back to that we had that, that good resources in planning so far, uh, for that type of disaster. Also, uh, one of the things that, that was, uh, great to be a part of an organization of that, like that, and to know that we're part of something bigger, um, when we need that, and it was, it was a, a great, great feeling to have and be able to, to get that money to our members, and we had that money within six to seven days, so it wasn't something that we had, uh, to wait greatly for. The other announcement was that normally at this time I come up here and, you know, it's, it's a great thing to be able to say, "Hey, we're, fill the boots coming up," um, we've made a decision this year not to do fill the boot due to how our community's affected, not only is our community dealing with having to recover, but a lot of our membership, so that's something that we do on our own time, and it's just gonna be very hard this year to try to fill that roster, so I just wanted to make an announcement, let, make sure that our citizens knew that, uh, why we weren't doing it this year and why we made that decision to not move forward, and it's, it's something that took us, just like any other organizations, and I've read out there, it's, it's a hard decision to make, um, over the past five years, we've raised a little over a hundred thousand for the MDA, so it's, uh, we're hoping that next year we come back and we come a little bit stronger and make up, make up for this year, so, um, I wanna thank all the citizens, we've been supported tremendously throughout this entire ordeal, uh, we haven't ran out of cakes or cookies or anything like that in the stations, uh, for about two months now, so, um, me personally, from the firefighters to all of our citizens, thank y'all for everything y'all do, and thank y'all for supporting us.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, appreciate the update. I see a familiar face, Mr. Marshall, how are you, sir?
I'm fine, recognizing the mayor and the city council members, happy birthday, Tom. Uh, my name is Victor Marshall, I, uh, live at one-two-three Rieda, I've been a resident of Victoria for seventy-six plus years, uh, a few of those years I was in college, but, uh, I have a question for the council, is why is it we do not have a street named after Dr. Martin Luther King? I, uh, you all, I'm not gonna go into what Dr. King stood for, you all know that, he touched my life back in, uh, in what he was doing and what he was, uh, what he stood for, I can remember in the sixties, uh, just about three blocks down the street, in front of Town Plaza, there was a store in Woodward that would not let me sit at the counter and eat. Uh, just around the corner on Constitution, about a half a block down from Main, there was a shoe store, I, uh, purchased ninety-nine percent of my shoes from that store, one day I, uh, wanted to sit in at the shoe shop, uh, shoe stand and get my shoe shining, I was not allowed to, to sit in the shoe shine stand. Uh, about a block and a half further down on Constitution, there was a hotel, I worked there during the summer when I was in college, I could work there, but I could not stay there. In nineteen sixty, uh, nineteen fifty-nine and nineteen sixty, Booker T. Carter and myself were the first black athletes to go to Victoria College and play football. In nineteen sixty, we had a game scheduled to play with Blinn College, I was not allowed on that field. I became a member of the track team, I was the only black on the track team at Victoria College, when we went out of town, I stayed at the college dormitories, my teammates stayed at the Holiday Inn, I couldn't stay at the Holiday Inn. I, I can remember those things, about forty-plus years ago, I stood in this council, and I asked the council to name a street after Dr. King, and, you know, you'd be surprised at some of the answers I got, one of them was, "We don't name streets after individuals." Of course, I've mentioned there was Sam Houston, there was a street named Eisenhower, later on they named John Stockton, and then they came to me and said, "Okay, well, we, we thought about North Street," and you know where North Street is, it's a street that starts nowhere and goes nowhere, but the residents, uh, they came as the residents on North Street, and, uh, they didn't want, uh, they said that changing the name would cause the police, I mean, the post office to, uh, uh, miss some of their mail because the name's been changed, well, that's really thanking a lot of our postal people. And then there was even some individuals that said that the property value would decrease if they named the street after a black man, well, that's not true, I lived on Guy Grant, and my house I built for twenty-eight thousand in thirteen years increased over a hundred thousand. So, I was just wondering, why is it we can't get a street named after Dr. King? I, uh, I go to Carpers, got a street named after Dr. King, San Antonio has a street named after Dr. King, Austin, now Capitol, named Twenty-third Street, which is, it goes from city limit to city limit, they named it after Dr. Martin Luther King, and it's only two blocks, it runs two blocks in front of Capitol. Houston has a street, even Port LeVaca has a street after MLK, Edna, Texas, Quero, uh, I can't see anything about Yokam, I, I, I don't travel through Yokam that much, so I don't know. I even think that if Mission Valley had one, more than one street, they'll name a, a street after Dr. King, but I know, um, you're probably, next question is, is what, do I have a street named, uh, in mind here in Victoria? Yes, I do, and, uh, I, I would not want a street on the south part of town, it was mentioned to me about northeast, I mean, Southeast Water Street, that's another street that starts nowhere and goes nowhere. Uh, I'm gonna start high, I, I like to have a, a major street, I do not want a street that, uh, we start a new subdivision to name it, I don't want a, uh, King name in a subdivision, only two or three blocks long. So I had some, uh, some ideas, like I said, I, I think big, I thought about, uh, the Houston Highway, if you come into Tefner, you see, uh, a sign that says, uh, Fifty-Nine North to Goliad, I mean Fifty-Nine South to Goliad, and then you see, uh, Fifty-Nine Business, which comes down by the airport into Victoria, I thought that would be a good street, it goes all the way down to what we call Five Points, uh, we don't even have to stop at Five Points, we can leave, take Moody Street and just go right on out to, uh, to where, uh, it intersects back into Fifty-Nine, uh, South to Laredo. Then I thought about, well, what about four-six-three, as it comes off of Fifty-Nine, uh, De Loop and turns into, uh, Zack Lent, I don't think, uh, Mr. Lent would worry about a name like MLK right next to his, Zack Lent's Parkway MLK Boulevard. Then there was, uh, I thought about eighty-seven coming in from Quero, and that turns into Main, wow, that goes down Main Street right in, center part of Victoria, yeah, but it ends up down by the tracks, down by the powerhouse, yeah. Then I thought about Navarro Street, and then I thought, I don't think Dr. King would like that anyway, not to wear, uh, a street like that, uh, congestion and, and all, and then one last street I thought was Little Rent Street, which, uh, starts at Sam Houston and goes all the way out to Fifty-Nine South. South. So that was just some ideas of it. But I was just wondering, you know, why we don't have a street name after King? I have any questions? Am I any questions? That's all I have.
Um I can comment. And and thank you for being here, Mr. Marshall. I've had the pleasure of calling you a friend for a long time, I think. And um you and I started this discussion and then Harvey came along. And so I knew you, and I want to thank you for your patience with us. Uh after you you and I initially discussed it, staff actually started working on it and coming up with the list of names. And that's about the time the hurricane came. And so we need to get that project started back up. Uh we have some ideas and some thoughts and some, just like your ideas. We need to sit down, perhaps you and and staff could meet and include. I'd like to be included in that.
I'd be glad to.
And then come up and offer recommendations for council to weigh in on. Uh I agree with you. You know, I think there's nothing wrong with it and it's time to start looking at it and 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 uh mulling it over. It may not happen right away, but we need to get it done.
Well, at least not another forty years, isn't it?
I would agree with that. I would agree with that. I can't speak to the council of forty years ago, but I I'll bet you the seven people sitting here with me are very open to the idea, if I'm guessing right. So.
Thank you.
Okay. We will be in touch with you.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Citizens communication is still open.
Good afternoon. My name is uh Jose Aloniz. I'm pastor of Christian Multi-Athletic Baptist Church here at six oh one East Red River. And on behalf of the congregation and myself, uh we're can, uh came to uh speak on our concerns. Um there at uh where we are located, six oh one East Red River, uh we are seeing a game room being opened right across the street, right kind of corner to us. And our concern is uh, uh I'm just here to voice our opinion, our concern about it opening up. Uh I checked around. I asked here at the uh if they had already had permits to uh, and they were going on with the with the opening and when it was going to be open. But they had, could not give me any, any information. I guess they're not uh haven't got the permit. But my, in hopes that that the city council would hear us out and and our concern and 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 also further down the road. And and we've been there for over fifty years as uh reaching our community, especially those around there in uh our church area for Christ. And our our concern is that uh that we're uh, I don't know uh if there is a city ordinance on on game rooms being opened up so close to churches. Uh but uh, you know, we just uh, we don't like the idea. And uh we hope that that coming here tonight, I would get some answers and from the council as you meet on this issue. Um I don't know where you worship at, but if there is any game rooms any close to your worship centers or or churches. Um so our concern is, you know, what kind of crowd it would draw and and how we meet there on Wednesdays and Sundays and Vacation Bible School. And and we have uh kids and uh women, children, different ministries that meet together there. And uh and uh what it would uh do as 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 our future growth and we would like to grow. And and we're we're praying for growth and we we work to to uh grow the church. And uh I see if it could be a problem for some people coming and wanting to come to to visit with us or even join us because there would be uh that uh game center there or game room there. Uh so I'm just uh here just to voice our concern and that uh that y'all know how we how we see, how we feel about it and and hopefully to to hear from y'all. And um uh I don't know where to go from here. So this is my first time here and to voice anything. I had never had the opportunity to come before you, but so is something new.
You're doing great. Don't worry. You're doing fine. So what I would suggest, our chief of police, if you look back there, raise your hand, chief, if you see him, uh maybe y'all visit and he can tell you about some of the regulations that we do impose.
Yes.
And also tell you uh if he can get name and number. And if you have questions about making sure it's properly permitted, we can get those answered for you. And and you share concerns with him and we'll start with that. Would that be acceptable?
Well, yes.
So I don't know that you're going to stay for the whole meeting, but on your way out, if y'all will step outside.
Okay.
Get your, give him your name and number and let's go from there.
Well, Lisa, I know what um hit the right direction, you know.
Yes, sir.
Uh just want to let you know that uh if if uh, you know, there, these uh game rooms are being uh all over the city. But if uh the city or the council would uh understand our our point of view and our ministry and uh and how it would, how I would feel every day going out there and seeing that they're there in front of us and what we stand for for Christ and and God's uh, God's laws and how God would feel, you know. And uh that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Citizens communication is still open. If anyone else would like to come forward. Okay. Seeing no one, I'm going to close citizen communication and we'll move into the rest of our agenda. Uh we do have two items that have public hearings. Read the first one.
Mayor and council, before we get into the items with public hearings, I'd like to draw your attention to two procedural items. Number one is that there's a slight change to the way the agenda is structured. Um after consultation with the mayor, we've uh decided that in the future, uh the second and third reading of an ordinance will be moved to the consent agenda, since we typically do not discuss those in uh council meetings. They can still be pulled from the consent agenda. Um if a council member wants to talk about that on the second and third reading. So you'll see tonight, that's not reflected because we don't have it on the second and third reading, but you'll see that at the next meeting that will come up.
Unless anyone has strong objection. I'm I'm just, okay.
And the second, I'll 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 say again when we get there, there's a special public hearing related to item C two, but we'll deal with that when we get there. Item C one is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Victoria, Texas, related to the disaster declaration issued by Mayor Paul Polosik on August twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen in response to Hurricane Harvey partially waiving certain unusual water fees related to damage caused by Hurricane Harvey, declaring an emergency, providing for savings and declaring an effective date. Mayor and council, this is the ordinance that you discussed at the last meeting. And I told you I would bring back to you a draft attempting to capture the discussion that you made and suggesting that you treat it as a rough draft um and make changes tonight as you see fit in order to make sure that we get it correct. There are two things I want to point out about that. Number one, I posted this for emergency reading because the last time that y'all waived fees, y'all posted it for emergency reading. And I didn't know whether you would want to continue that accelerated pace in order to get this put in place quickly in order to to help relieve the the burden on citizens. Um and then secondly, we do have at least one staff suggested revision to that ordinance.
Let's uh, let's open the public hearing first on the on C one. If anyone would like to speak to C one now, would be the time to come forward. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on C one and entertain a motion. Okay, we have a motion second. So Thomas, this is the language based upon the council's discussion last time?
That's that's right. That language that you see in front of you uh on the single sheet that I distributed everybody labeled C one is the staff's recommended change to what y'all proposed last time. And it would change the ordinance from looking at a seven-day period before and after to looking at a billing cycle instead. That was Donald Reese's suggestion. I think it's a good suggestion.
So in order to be able to qualify for this uh relief, it's stating that you have to have at least double the consumption of the previous month. So August, you'd have to have double. So even if you had a good-sized leak, unless you went two X what your water bill was, you're not eligible.
I believe that was the discussion last week, yes.
I don't think it was. Double.
I don't remember.
Fifty percent.
That's double the average of whatever consumption was before, but it wasn't.
I actually don't remember what. We threw around a lot of ideas. What do y'all, of course, now's the time to modify it if you want.
Double would be a hundred percent.
I don't know. Well, I guess it's, I wish I knew how many people that affected or didn't affect. You don't have that data, do you? Okay. So someone's.
Might be moot point, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Certainly the person that we had conversation with way exceeded that.
We did a uh a look in our system. We came up with right around twelve hundred. But you you've got to remember that that some of those were going from zero consumption up to a thousand gallons. So uh we don't really know if it's a true leak or if it was just, you know, additional consumption they had because they had extra family members living with them. It's it's very hard to tell. I mean, the leak report comes out for unusual usages, usage, excuse me, but it doesn't tell me it was a leak. It just.
Well, wouldn't you know a leak running all night long? Don't you know that data?
Yes, we do have that. We do have. But again, you've got to understand that that right after the flood, I mean, sorry, the the hurricane, that a lot of our meters were covered in floodwater or they had debris on top of them. So again, I I don't, it it's not an exact science. We we're, it's going to be right around twelve hundred somewhere.
You were unable to read some of those?
Yeah, we were unable to read some of those because they were covered with debris or or the customer piled their brush on top of them or they were just under floodwater for for a few days. So there was a time period that may have extended up to two weeks that we're, we weren't able to get that initial reading.
But I thought we were doing our readings electronically now.
It it's still got to get the signal out. Signal's got to get through whatever's on top of the meter. And uh if the transmitter's broken, maybe a tree fell and broke the transmitter, it's it's not going to get out. So there was, there was a lot of those. We were finding, we're still finding them.
And so is that kind of why you're proposing to go with the water bill instead of just looking at that time period?
If we can, if we can look at a a full bill, it gives us a better picture of what what really happened. You know, if you if you're just looking at what was proposed originally one week, um you got to think that, you know, we went into a mandatory evacuation. So some people left. So their water usage that week before was a little bit less than it normally would have been. Then the week after, a lot of them I was unable to get readings for. So it's very skewed if you just look at one week. Either way, you need to add some time period.
What are your thoughts on the threshold uh for whether you qualify or not?
Uh as far as that, I can tell you that that was the interpretation that I got after the meeting was was the way it was written. Uh as far as my thoughts go, it's it's really up to y'all. However, y'all want to handle it is fine with me.
He dodged that one. That's okay. I, we we've got to set a a cutoff somewhere. And with double, I mean, we've got to set a cutoff somewhere.
Yeah.
It's hard.
Or not, or.
That's correct.
It just.
But are we still talking about just giving them fifty percent off? And like I said, the lady from last week, fifty percent wouldn't give her, not even, you know.
And and under the way it's interpreted interpreted right now, uh it'd be about a five hundred and four dollar credit.
Right. And that's not helping her.
Well, she had nine hundred. Five hundred's, I I mean, just.
I understand. But if her regular bill was forty-nine and now you expect her to pay five hundred and something, I don't think that's justice.
Well, again, that's that's where you just need to give us some direction. We'll be happy to do whatever y'all would like us to.
Well, it's uh, yeah, I mean, hers was extreme. I think her bill was nine hundred and thirty.
Nine hundred and seventy.
So it would end up being four seventy or whatever by the math. And yeah, so she's still, it's kind of a shared responsibility. And I know I'm probably going to get in trouble for saying that. But uh she was a unique situation. It was a lot of floodwater covered. Like you can't see a leak underwater, you know, that kind of thing. If y'all want to modify that, at least it gives him an objective number and staff can just do it. Uh Ms. Elise, I wouldn't object to, I don't know. You got, what do you guys think? We have two parameters to, if, can we agree on double the consumption?
As long as it's not half the bill, if that's what you're talking about.
Uh no, that's the second part.
That's just.
The first part is the double the consumption. The second part is the bill.
Okay.
And going to that just, yeah, I could buy into it.
Okay. So what do y'all want to do about the bill? Ms. Elise doesn't like the fifty percent.
No, I think the average of the last three months and then you go with that. But I don't know that you want to do that. But I would say an average of of consumption instead of fifty percent for the bill. Because if I've been paying fifty dollars, I'm not going to come, I mean, I don't have the money to pay five hundred dollars now. And and I know it's just an individual situation. So could, and I know you don't want to do each one individually, but have some kind of guidelines. I know that's what you're asking for. But I'm just saying, to be fair to everybody, uh you know, I would take the average of the last three months or something, not just the one month. But.
Well, this is just arbitrary off the top of my head. But uh, you know, if we do a a second part to it, that say their their water bill is now four times the, what it was the month before, then maybe we look at putting a cap or we, maybe at that point we look at doing what you're saying of of charging the water for the average of the three months before. But they first got to get to the threshold of, which I think this one situation you're talking about would definitely be four times the average. Uh but instead of, uh I mean, that gives it some definiti. Uh and it allows this to work for the most part, because I think it will work, except in those couple of unusual circumstances. And the only ones that we're aware of, again, it was off the top of my head, but four times really fits.
Four times the amount of the bill it was before? Is that what you're saying? That would go the max?
Right.
You mean consumption?
Yeah, four times, if the, if their bill is four times the consumption of the month before, then we perhaps look at only billing them the average.
I'm worried.
Twice the average or.
I'm worried it would make it complicated.
Yeah, you want to stick with just one number.
Well, we can also have them come on a case by case. And can, is this something we can do a variance to on a case by case basis?
Can we do that?
No.
That'd be too much?
I wouldn't recommend, yeah.
Okay.
Each individual varies to a couple of.
Right. But I I. I mean, how many, how many of these do we think there are? I think.
Have you had anybody call in since the last meeting?
Yes.
Oh, you have?
Yeah, many. We've been inundated.
What's many? Dozens?
How many's many?
I couldn't get hundreds.
Hundreds?
Yeah. Our our phones have, since the last council meeting, the phones, hundreds.
Okay. I I kind of liked Ms. Elise's uh about three-month average. Um and the double the consumption, just to make it cut off with that. First person that comes in that has ninety-two percent and gets mad, they can call us and gripe at us, you know, because they don't qualify for it. But I don't know what else to say. We have to have some, this is trying to ease the burden. This is what we're trying to do here. Um I don't know. You guys have been quiet on the end.
I I can go along with three-month average.
Staff, what do you think about that?
I think we can do three-month. That's not a problem.
So they're, they would only be charged for the average consumption based on the previous three months. And whatever was in excess would be waived. Is what we're saying?
Oh, according to this, fifty percent would be waived.
Can I, can I ask a clarification question? Donald, they're saying month and you're saying billing period. You would prefer it to be billing periods?
Yes, because our billing periods don't always follow a thirty-day cycle. So if we could make it billing period, that would help us out.
Yeah.
And I think, Mr. Delgarza, we need clarification. Uh from what I I understand is the bill will be the average of the three months.
Right.
Not, the the fifty percent mentioned in three A goes away.
Right. The fifty percent we're talking about, that you have to have used more than fifty percent. But the bill will be your average of your last three billing cycles.
I agree with that. We'll take that out.
I believe I can capture the the discussion. If you look at your alternative page, the C one page, if you look at paragraph three A, if we were to strike one-half fifty percent of such that the sentence begins with the amount. And in the third line, change the word two to three. I believe that captures the discussion. The sentence would then read, upon written request by the customer named on the account meeting the above requirements, the utility billing office is hereby authorized to rebate the following portion of the consumer's water bill. A, the amount that the consumption portion of the bill for the billing periods including Hurricane Harvey exceeds the average of the three billing periods immediately preceding Hurricane Harvey.
And why is it billing periods uh including, oh, okay, that's because if if it's right there in the middle of that time.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll have to make a motion. I'll have to make a motion to amend this. But, uh, three C, I'm worried about three C. The amount rebated shall not include any fees for late payment. I think we have people that have been waiting to see what we're going to do. And it, I may have, you know, Ms. Charbula, they brought this to our attention and attended our last meeting. I told her, wait to see what we do. So I made us, spoke out of turn. If she, y'all's process is going on and she's continuing to receive letters while they're waiting on us, I don't think we can charge them a late fee.
I thought that was taken care of when we waived the late fees. When, remember when I asked about the late fees and you said that there was some words in there that we-
If I remember correctly, Thomas, you can jump in, we waived the late fee for that month. So if this is carried over past, uh, August or even September, then we have applied some late fees. So is that-
What if we add it at the end of that sentence, associated with the excess consumption? So the amount rebated shall not include any fees for late payment associated with the excess consumption. Or should include any late fees associated with the excess consumption? Because take the worst case scenario that we have, it's a nine hundred dollar bill and she's holding off and there's late fees associated with that. I would not expect us to charge her late fees for that portion, but her base water consumption, if she didn't pay, hey, this is usually what I made. Here's the check for forty bucks. Then yet you still need to pay the late fees for that, but not that excess water consumption.
Well, I understand what you're saying, just, that adds to the difficulty to calculate the credit. It just, I, I have a feeling we're going to have a, a lot of these. And so as simple as we can possibly make it for my staff would be greatly appreciated.
By reducing the, uh, amount of the bill, that would also reduce the amount of the late fees. So instead of having a ninety dollar late fee, she'll have, you know, four or five dollars if she gets a fifty dollar bill. Uh, you know, because it's ten percent of whatever the bill is.
Right, we'll go have to go back and, and manually calculate each of those, uh, which adds to, uh, complexity of coming up with that credit. At the, like the non-payment fee, if y'all choose to waive that, that's easy. We just take the non-payment fee off. That's a twenty-five dollar fee done. But if you're talking about reducing what ten percent fee was charged down to what it should have been charged, that's just an extra step. It, I mean, it can be done, but it just, it, it adds a, it adds an extra step that's going to take additional time to get that done. And then we're going to have a bunch of these.
Maybe I'm confused. Our late fee is not a percentage of the outstanding balance?
It's a ten percent, but it is ten percent.
So it is, yeah. I mean, it doesn't make sense to charge her ten percent late fee on a reduced, doesn't make sense. All right.
So the amount rebated shall include any fees for late payment?
And just get, waive them. But we can't rebate, well, wait a minute. So the amount rebated shall include any fees for late payment?
That means if your bill has that late payment fee on it, your rebate can include it. So we just take out-
Oh, okay, I see. Just pay it and they get it to use it up?
Yeah.
Is that easier?
Yes, sir. If you're going to choose to, to do that, that's what I would request, just to make it simpler. If there's a late penalty involved, let's just, let's just waive it for simplicity.
So I make a motion to amend item three C by striking not.
We need the rest of it. Can we just make?
As well as the other two, changes to two C.
All of the language on this individual sheet in red-
Strike that three A.
All of the language in red on this single sheet, C one, would need to be included in an, in an amendment. So if I may, Mr. Bucknight, if you'll follow along.
Sure.
I, if I may interpret your amendment to include staff's recommended changed language to look at billing periods rather than individual days and to strike the fifty percent reduction and to include three months of billing rather than two and to strike the not in order to rebate the late payment fees. You are, you are recommending that we amend to adopt the staff's recommendation.
I concur with that. That's my motion to amend.
I second.
So we have a motion, second, to amend.
Have discussion.
Discussion.
And I know I'm going somewhere else with it, but as we're talking about that, two C that Mr. Bucknight just mentioned, um, it does say in order to qualify, you, your account has to either be fully paid or be under a payment plan which is fully paid current or otherwise in good standing. If late fees are outstanding, does that make two C not be being complied with? Does that make a problem? So the two C might need some work also? I don't know.
Probably. You're probably right.
And I tried to say that before Mr. Bucknight got his motion in.
I think that, uh, if I was looking at that separately, I would say that you were, had to have been in good standing at the end of the billing period for the last billing period that concluded Hurricane Harvey or something, before this occurred.
And perhaps the billing periods after, uh, I mean, if you've got your, I don't know.
But you're correct. The way I read this, the business with the nine hundred dollar water bill would have to pay that water bill before they could get a rebate.
Well, they may be under a payment plan.
But even if they weren't, they would have to pay it or say-
They would have to be current on whatever state they are on their payment plan, that, that monthly payment of their payment plan. That's my interpretation of what y'all discussed last, last meeting.
I understand it that way too. It may not be completely paid off, but they're, they're current. So therefore, from there, you would get a credit, not from the whole bill if it's not paid.
Okay. I mean, I don't know whether to add, with the exception of late fees, because I like two C. I don't want to strike it. You know, it's otherwise in good standing or B is currently under a payment plan and the plan is fully current, fully paid current or otherwise in good standing.
And Scott, would it, would it encapsulate your concern if we added to the end of that sentence other than the late fees which are waived by three C below?
Yes.
Mr. Bucknight, would you amend your amendment to include that?
Uh, I do, I do make that motion to amend the amendment to include that language at the end of two C.
Thank you. Second on that.
Second. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right.
I'm writing.
Make me grovel for a second.
Can I be particular, other than the late fees which are waived in three C below?
Yes, ma'am.
The language thing, okay.
Which are waived in three C below.
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Solis, second.
Okay, you're going to need security at the water department by the time this is all done. I apologize. I know it's difficult. Tell all your folks at the counter that we do appreciate them. I know that this has got to be hard to face some of those folks and explain and you're going to have people come up that don't meet the criteria and are going to get angry.
Yeah, we'll work through it. Got great staff down there. Thomas, I would like a clean copy of that to share with my staff, if you don't mind.
I'll get you a clean copy as soon as I write it. Appreciate it. I'll be looking back at the video to make sure I get the language right.
But I mean that. I appreciate you guys, you know. Water bills are hard for some folks and, you know. I, I know that PD talks about being negative contact business. Uh, sometimes you guys have to do that too. So thank you all for what you do.
Thank you. I'll, I'll pass that along. Appreciate it.
Please do. Okay, now I know we have several votes to take. We have a, a motion and a second to amend, a amending motion and second. So whatever the last one was, we're going to vote on.
He withdrew the original amendment, so we have one amendment on the floor which has been seconded to adopt all of the staff's language as has been revised tonight.
Okay, okay. So there's just the one, and then we have to vote on C one as all, as amended?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, so now we're back to C one as amended. I do have one little clarification. Thomas, you called that an emergency reading, I noticed. Was that due to, uh, does that make it go into effect after one reading?
Yes, it does. And, and I drafted it that way to provide sta-, uh, council the flexibility. If you, if you wanted to do it on emergency reading, I had to include that in the ordinance as it was drafted. But if you choose not to, we can still split it out and bring this back second and third reading next week. So by drafting it as an emergency ordinance, it allows you the flexibility to put it in place more quickly.
Which we probably should do, but, um, so I'm sorry, were you shaking your head over?
Oh, yes. No, I appreciate it. But it came up as an emergency. That way we're not delaying this and adding more billing cycles and late fees to this.
Okay. So we will see it again? We will not. Okay, I just want to make that number ten clear. Okay. All right, uh, we have motion and second on C one as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, thank you.
May I make a comment just for the public? There is a deadline to apply for this in writing and it's December thirty-first. So if somebody out there wishes to apply, they need to do it before the end of the year.
Thank you for that reminder. Okay, C two.
Item C two has a, a special public hearing notice. Did anyone happen to notice that we posted in, in separate special meeting for a public hearing on this particular item? It will be included in the normal public hearing that we have on this ordinance. Item C two is an ordinance repealing ordinance number two thousand one dash nineteen of the city of Victoria, Texas, which ordained the city's participation in the Texas Enterprise Zone Program pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, chapter twenty-three oh three, Texas Government Code, and to extend additional incentives for qualified businesses under said program, nominating Victoria of Texas LP project in the city as an enterprise project under the Texas Enterprise Zone Program, including procedural provisions and declaring an effective date. So move.
We have a public hearing, real quick, hold that motion. Uh, I'll open the public hearing on C two. If anyone would like to speak to this item, now would be the time. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion, second, discussion. Dale Fowler, Mr. Dale Fowler, how are you, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and, and Council. I, I just would like to, uh, visit with you briefly about the, uh, Texas Enterprise Zone Program and the, uh, also would like to introduce George Parsley from Ditar Hospital. He's chief operating officer. And Joseph Bullen is the assistant administrator are with us tonight. And, uh, th- this ordinance, uh, would, would establish, uh, Ditar Hospital location as an enterprise zone project, partly due to, uh, and the reason they're making this application is they've got an ICU renovation and expansion project going on. And of course, uh, in addition to that, now they have some hurricane damage to repair. And the Texas Enterprise Zone Program allows a business that is nominated by the municipality or county and then accepted by the state, uh, based on their, their points in their application, uh, to receive a refund of state sales tax on the, uh, sales tax that they pay for their project, uh, that, that has been designated. It in no way, uh, gives them the authority to request any, uh, city or county sales tax back from these purchases, only the state sales tax. In your package, you'll see a long list of incentives, uh, that a city or a community, our community, may offer the project. Uh, there's no intention or request, uh, to offer any of those incentives. However, that list of incentives gives their application greater point scoring. As a matter of fact, part of the, uh, the amendment or amended package, I think that Thomas gave you, included an additional incentive, uh, that was originally put on there. Uh, the, uh, uh, I believe that was, uh, Freeport tax exemption, which is something you do in fact offer in, in Victoria. And all of those lists of incentives helps their scoring because when the state accepts their application, it's judged against all the other applications that are submitted during that quarter. And based on, uh, the scoring, they select a designated number that they will award that quarter. And so the points do make a difference. Uh, another reason for part of the, uh, rush on this application is that the consultant informed us that a disaster, uh, disaster county gets an additional ten points on their application. So because of the hurricane and the disaster designation, it will help their application score a little better. So basically, this is a way to, uh, allow Ditar Hospital to receive this, uh, state offered incentive. Uh, the city gets six of these designations every biennium and the county gets six, uh, every biennium. To my knowledge, through my time in economic development, we've never had a total of six applications, uh, period. Uh, maybe one or two every biennium, so be glad to answer any questions for you.
Dale, you said this is just us nominating them, so we have no paperwork, nothing that's involved for us as a city?
Well, from, from the city's perspective, the, there is an annual report, uh, that goes back to the state based on the activity in that, in this particular enterprise zone. And I think that goes on for five years of the duration of the, uh, of the project, of the designated project. It's a fairly simple report. In the past, our office has completed that report, so, uh, that's the only obligation. There's no incentive obligation, uh, to the city. Thank you.
Okay, and, and Council, do you know you have a substituted version on your desk? Did everybody get that?
Does that mean we need to amend?
No. Excuse me, no, I'm sorry. Staff, uh, is recommending the substituted version and that's the item that we took out.
I do want to clear one thing up. It's very minor, but on the substituted version on page three, that four point five, and I spoke to you Dale briefly on the way in and we didn't have time to talk about it, but it says the city council directs and designated city manager as the city's liaison to communicate and negotiate with the E D T through the bank and enterprise projects, et cetera. You just said that you've done that in the past. Does it matter?
Well, we've done it in the past. Whether or not, uh, you know, if, if, um, you or the city manager directs us to do it on their behalf, then we'll do it on their behalf. Otherwise, it's not really going to matter how it's worded, I don't think. Thomas, do you agree or disagree?
Gilbert's department probably does it. Okay, we, I would like to just leave it this way, as long as it doesn't cause any problems.
Doesn't cause me any concern.
Okay, very good. It's, it's a non-issue then. All right, Council, you have questions? I think this is a great thing. Ditar Hospital is a wonderful, uh, strategic partner in this community. Any way we can help them out. It's good.
It's, it's good that they're reinvesting in, in their facility.
Absolutely, we appreciate them being here tonight, so, okay. Uh, see no further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Thank you, thank you Dale. Consent agenda, and we do, we are pulling D four, right?
That's right. So there are four items remaining on the consent agenda. They are first, the approval of the minutes of a regular meeting on October seventeenth and the minutes of the special meeting on October twenty-fifth. Second is a resolution approving the purchase of uniforms and outerwear for fire department employees in an estimated amount of sixty-one thousand three hundred dollars by a government cooperative contract from Gauw, excuse me, Galls LLC, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date. The third is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to apply for and accept a grant from the Texas Department of Transportation for its twenty-eighteen selected traffic enforcement program in the amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents, with matching funds from the city in the amount of nine thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-two cents and declaring an effective date. And item D five is a resolution approving the purchase of chain and flight sludge collector replacement parts from Equova Water Technologies LLC in the amount of forty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty dollars, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, now we'll do D four.
D four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Gulf Bend Center related to an interlocal assistance agreement with the local mental health authorities and mobility agency task force to set forth the terms and conditions for reimbursement to the city for its participation in the task force of the services of a mental health peace officer and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Okay, um, in lieu of everything that's going on in the outside world and everywhere else, it's very important for us to have this police officer, okay, in my eyes. Are we going to be having any more? I see that we're going to renew the contract and then again in two thousand and nineteen. But are we having any of the other officers that can also help or, you know, I'm just saying because of, you know, so many people have mental issues and we don't know what triggers it. You know, just having one police officer out there, I imagine he's got so much work, you know, I can't see him doing anything else but thinking about all this. What kind of training are we getting for our other officers?
Uh, that, that's a great question, and I can tell you that, uh, I think it's next month that by the time the month's out, every officer that we have will be a mental health peace officer under the Texas occupations code and have that extra tier of training. Now, all peace officers now in the state of Texas-
Now, all peace officers now in the state of Texas are required by, by law changes in, in the, in statute over the last several legislative sessions have, have required enhanced training on the matter of dealing with those in crisis. Uh, this agency's gone one step beyond and got the top-tier mental health officer training. It's a core responsibility of our department. When, uh, the, when the phone rings, when 911 rings and we get the call that someone is in crisis, we go. And it, in 99% of the time, it will not be this particular officer. It will be someone who's on the street, uh, that, that's on the street currently. And I also should mention that many times, when the call comes in, the call doesn't come in as someone that's in, in dis- mental distress. It's some other kind of call. And once the officer gets there and looks into it, he determines that that's the core issue and pivots and addresses it in the proper manner. What this one officer does, and I've got Jeff Tunnel here from Gulf Bend, a super collaborator on this project, as a matter of fact, he's the, he's the driver of, of the program. What we needed and what this, this officer provides us is follow-up. Oftentimes, what we find is these individuals are treatment-resistant, uh, they, they maybe not, or moving around, sleeping on couches, or maybe not even a house altogether. They don't have their, they don't renew their prescriptions, or maybe they trade prescriptions for food. And so, they kind of, they get lost. This officer goes around and does the follow-up and make sure that they are on, stay on their treatment plan. And I can tell you, uh, from the statistics that, uh, Mr. Tunnel's provided on the operations at the task force, uh, this, uh, in like, for instance, in July alone, there were 95 well checks where they went out to folks that, that had experienced crisis to check on them. And in our agency, our, our calls to people in crisis have dropped dramatically in a short period of time. Uh, some of it's going to be due to displacement with, with the hurricane, that, that's for certain, but over the six-month period, it can't be simply explained away just in terms of the storm because we saw it also before the storm. Uh, I should also, uh, I was also asked to mention that this is the first step in a, in a lar- much larger, uh, uh, initiative that, that we're working on with Gulf Bend, the Sheriff's Office, and the surrounding counties. Uh, and if you'd like to hear about that, I, Mr. Tunnel could come forward and explain it. We will be coming forward at a later date, uh, to, uh, ask for two other officers that will be funded, uh, grant-funded to assist this single officer. Uh, grand total, I think we're looking at 11, is that correct, Jeff? 11 mental health peace officers that will be paired with counselors that are in Victoria, Victoria County, uh, and the surrounding areas.
Great, well, that's good work. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Lee, thank you for pulling that. Your words were very, uh, timely. I was thinking the same thing, so.
Well, we just need to be more aware of our situations around it.
Yeah.
It could happen to anybody.
Yep. Counsel, is there any other questions about this issue? Okay, thank you, Chief. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Thank you, all right. What do we have? Resolutions?
E1. Item E1 is a resolution rejecting all proposals to manage Riverside Golf Course and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Okay. I know we have some discussion. Would you?
Well, Gilbert's got a PowerPoint presentation that he's going to go through, but just to kind of summarize it, as I mentioned earlier, uh, after we received the two bids from the, um, private sector company that were management consulting and looking at their fees, and what we believe we can do it for, our recommendation tonight is to reject both of those bids and allow us to manage the golf course going forward. And Gilbert's done a financial analysis, so you can, um, we'll go through that.
All right. Let me see how many mulligans I get. No kidding, just kidding. All right, uh, I hope, I have copies of the presentation. I don't know if anybody wants extra. Hopefully, y'all have your own. Okay. Okay.
Not working?
You want to do the page? All right. Let me give you the background, first of all. July 1st, the city's, it's not working, you gonna do it? Thank you, just put them all up. Uh, July 1st, as you well know, the city took over the, the golf course to start managing it. July 31st, we released the RFP for, asking for proposals for the management of the golf course. September 1st was the deadline of the RFP, and September through October, the proposals were evaluated. Next slide, please. We received two proposals, one from Forside Golf and Touchstone Golf LLC. Proposals consisted of the following. There's a key, okay. We, uh, they included management fee service contract, meaning that they will manage the golf course for a monthly fee. However, the financial risk, 100% of it belongs to the city. In other words, the city's responsible for all cash flow requirements. They also include incentive compensation fee. In other words, any given year, if there is a net profit, cash flow profit, before any capital expenditures and before any fees associated to it, they get a percentage of it. They proposed that as well. Next slide. One of them, which was, uh, Forside, included also an overhead fee, which is basically a pro-rata share of their corporate home office costs associated to operating the Riverside Golf Course related to retail, golf cart fleet, HR issues, administration, et cetera, et cetera. To put it all in, recap it as one table. Thank you. On the manager fee, golf, I mean, uh, Forside, cost is about $90,000 a year, a 10-year contract. Touchstone broke it over a certain timeframe. First two years, $60,000, next three years, $72,000. That's too fast. And then the last five years, $84,000. The incentive fee on the Forside is 20% of the cash flow, positive. And Touchstone, of course, is 15%. And of course, the overhead fee, which I mentioned earlier, Forside is, for the first year, is $52,095. Now, with that in mind, after we looked at this evaluation, I say, hey, let me develop a 12-months budget, assuming we operate the golf course in order to compare apples from apples. I thought it was a fair comparison. As a result of that. One more? One more? Stop, thank you. If you had time to evaluate the RFPs, but I just did it as a summary total. Forside showed a net cash flow of a negative $158,000. And I will go through each one and explain some of the variance, but right now, I'll give you the bottom line. Forside had negative cash flow of about $158,000, their proposal. Touchstone had about $12,000 positive cash flow. And of course, the one we developed ended up being about $76,000 positive cash flow. Now, with that said, if you compare Forside Golf to the City of Victoria, you're looking at about $11,000 difference there. Basically, what the difference is, Forside assumed about 25 cart shed rentals, we have 34 cart shed rentals. In addition to that, and my numbers includes an annual pass. So, that's, that's where the difference comes up at. When you compare Touchstone to the City of Victoria, there's about a 20, a $30,000 difference there. Basically, what we have there, Touchstone assumes an average cart slash green fee of $28. Our budget assumes $31. In addition to that, Touchstone includes tournament revenues. My budget did not assume tournament revenues in the first year. So, in that difference, that's about $30,000. That's the difference there. On the merchandise and F&amp;B, which is basically food and beverage sales, pretty close to Forside and City of Victoria is pretty close, there's difference about, uh, $39,000. And the main difference there is that Forside is planning to sell a different, more type of merchandise than we're planning to do. For good examples, that shoes, golf shoes, we don't plan to do golf shoes first year. So, that's the major difference there. Of course, on the Touchstone versus City of Victoria, that's about $138,000 difference. They got real aggressive on their merchandise side. They, they have a, a larger menu, a merchandise product that we're planning to sell. And of course, they're very aggressive on the food and beverage side than we were. So, that's the main difference right there. When you look at the cost goods sold, logically, if your, uh, sales from your goods are higher, you should have a higher cost goods sold across the port. That's why Forside's a little larger than ours. Touchstone is much larger than ours because, of course, they had taken a more aggressive approach in the merchandise and food and beverage sales. So, of course, they're going to have a larger cost goods sold. On their operating expense, if you compare Forside to City of Victoria, there's a $142,000 difference. There's two reasons for that. Of course, one, in Forside, there's $52,000 in overhead that's in that number. The second part of that is that they have a larger payroll cost than we do, meaning that they ha- their assumption has more full-time employees than the City of Victoria's assumption. Ours assume more time, uh, part-time employees the first year. Good examples of that, their, uh, golf shop, they have more full times. We're planning to use one full time, maybe two or three part times. The second example of that would be their golf, the attendees outside. I don't know if you, y'all play a lot of golf, but if you go out to San Antonio, go to the quarry, or to go to, uh, the Hyatt or JW Marriott, you have a ti- people standing outside, they grab you, your gloves, they bring it in, they clean it off and everything, ready to go. It's a higher caliber of service that they want to provide, too. We're not there yet, we're not providing that kind of service, so we don't have that cost involved right now. So, that's the main difference right there. Under the, um, Touchstone versus the city side, when it comes to the operating expenses, it's about $16,000. Basically, the difference there is that we have a higher cost when it comes to the cart and mowing lease contracts than they're providing in their contract. Bottom line, uh, as a result of that, Forside's coming up with a $58,000 negative cash flow, Touchstone, $12,000, City of Victoria, $76,000. If you go down the Forside, say, okay, we want to go Forside, and that's the budget we want to stick to, we're going to be out, net $248,000 cash flow. In other words, we've got to come up with a 248. Keep in mind, one thing I need to point out here, we still have to create a reserve. If we're going to create, if we're going to be in the business, or if somebody else is going to do it, we have to create that working capital to establish that reserve. I'll explain that in a minute. Well, I'll explain now. When it comes to the golf business, as every many know, that there's going to be some time play that you got winter months, so your revenues will drop. There's no doubt about it. And it'll pick up March, summer, fall. So, you got to mitigate that somehow. You have to have some decent cash flow and your working capital to, just in case you need to some, to work around that, cash in the bank. So, I'm recommending, which I'll show you in a minute, at least a five, minimum five months' reserve, and I'll show you how to come up with that. If that's the case, uh, 248,000 is negative cash flow right there, so we still have to come up with the working capital to equi- to bring it up, so it's going to be quite a bit. Touchstone, they had a better, uh, proposal. They're looking at $50,000 after you pay out all the fees, but $50,000 net cash flow. A city, as I mentioned, four, had a 76. Now, what's, what's go- what does it look like if, okay, Gil, let's go with the City of Victoria budget scenario, but what's the number for Forside and also Touchstone? And it working out? So, if we, we go along that scenario, instead of the city keeping about $76,000, we pay out Forside about 100 and something change, we end up being a negative cash flow again at $81,000. On the Touchstone, it's an impositive, but we give out 71,000. So, you keep 76, or you stay with 4,000. That's the logic there. Any questions? Okay. Now, as many of y'all recall, our plan of action was to open up September. Of course, we had this Hurricane Harvey incident. That kind of changed things around. And, um, right now, we're looking around January, the 2018. I believe the, maybe the first, second week, we haven't picked the date yet. In light of that, I'm making assumption, okay, if the city decides to operate it, and it's going to be Council's blessing on that, your decision, of course, but I'm going with that assumption. I have to readjust the numbers because I'm won't, I would not have three months of payroll costs and all that, so I kind of redid it, take those months off, and I came up with a revised, that first budget saw, it's little revised because I had to take off payroll costs and some minor things that it's not going to happen the first three months. But before I show you that, I'll take you down memory lane. Back in July, we came to you, all right? BPI stood, here's the golf course. We came back to you, said, "We need some fund to operate in the meantime to take care the remaining fiscal year of 2017, and also a portion of 2018," as you recall, October and November. Because our plan of action is like, you know, we go out for RFP, maybe we get lucky, and I forgot to mention this, maybe we get a lease contract. Boy, that'd be great. Lease contract, somebody comes in, city, give me the land, give me the building, it's all yours, no financial responsibility, and I'll pay you X dollars a month. Sweet deal. Well, it didn't work out that way. So, that, I, I did look, we were looking for all that. As a matter of fact, City Corpus has that, but they got lucky 10 years ago. You don't see those anymore, I guess. So, where we have in 27, in 2017, I came to y'all, we amended the budget, of course, we talked about that transfer of 42,000. We set it for 263 expenditures, and I said, "Okay, we might end up around 182." I revised this a few weeks ago. I'm looking in, coming in around 187. So, it's pretty close, close. And also, consider that projection includes encumbrance carryover. Now, in addition to that, in August, we came to you with a 2018 budget, and that budget, we had the golf course budget for 2018. And I presented you revenues of $227,000, and also capital expenditure total of $188,000. Now, keep that in mind. What we want to do now is take those numbers, which is, that's the same slide, and come back and say, "Hey, we need amended. We're going to operate it, and this is what it's going to take for the first year." Coming in here, we're, we're saying, we amended the revenues to be 1.1, which is an increase of 824,000. The expenditure size go up by 714,000, goes up from 188 to 92,000, and you end up with a working capital of 386. Now, let me talk about the circles. The 140, 140,300, as I mentioned earlier, that number will help us develop the working capital that would generate a five-month reserve, that $386,000 to see in the bottom circle. That's a five-month reserve of your total expenditures. Now, where that 140,300 is coming from, Gil? Well, I'll tell you. In the 2018 budget, in non-departmental, there's $41,000 set aside already for the po- the golf. That's ready there. What I'm suggesting, the follow-two items are followed. $58,000 can come from the Techside Overpass Reimbursement Fund. You remember, we get money from Techside, we use that money to pay off debt. We can accommodate $58,000 to be used, moved, transferred to the golf. Last of that number comes from the Parks Department. You remember, we increased the tax rate by one penny. Within that one penny, I had a slide up and showing, $100,000 went to Park. And then we had some discussion, then 59,000 change went to Right-Away Mowing. That leaves the 41,300 still in Parks. I'm recommending, go ahead and move that 41,300 for one time to the golf. So, you take the 41,000, that's non-departmental right now, allocated for the golf, take an additional $58,000 for the Techside Reimbursement Over Fund, I mean, Repayment Fund, and the 41,000 that's sitting in Parks right now, Professional Services, those add up to 140,300, and move that to the golf. That will help establish that five-month reserve. And again, I don't want to repeat myself, even if we're not doing it, I would have to recommend we have to come up with a working capital reserve amount. So, us or somebody else? Um, let's see, I lost track here.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, would the five-month reserve still be the same if we did it or somebody else Okay, would the five-month reserve still be the same if we did it or somebody else did it?
My recommendation is we should create at least a five-month reserve. So whatever budget we develop, if it's theirs, you know, whatever, if it ended up being negative, like let's take up, uh, Forside, I think it was two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand negative. Well, we're going to have to come up, two-hundred-and-fifty-six, fifty-eight, just to make it zero, and then you have to create a, a, a working capital over five months, it might have to be a little more because they have a larger budget. Does that make sense?
Yes. I just want to recap where you said you were getting the a hundred-and-forty-three.
Okay, the recap, I'll give you that.
Please.
In twenty-eighteen budget, non-departmental fund, I mean department, there's forty-one thousand dollars in there sitting right now, allocated, transferred to the golf.
Okay.
The new fund, I'm suggesting, take fifty-eight thousand dollars from Techside Reimbursement Fund. The money we get from Techside, we use those funds to pay off debt. We can accommodate fifty-eight thousand dollars without affecting the program. Okay? The last part, and during the twenty-eighteen budget workshop, council increased the tax rate one penny, remember that? Within that one penny, I had allocated a hundred thousand dollars to Parks. But during the course of the work sessions, fifty-nine thousand of that was moved to Right-Away Mowing, and that leaves about forty-one thousand dollars in change still in Parks. So I'm suggesting, take that forty-one thousand dollars in change, plus the fifty-eight thousand, plus the forty-one, and non-departmental, that adds up to the hundred-and-forty-three hundred. Does that make sense? One is in the budget, the two is my recommendation how we come up with the one-forty in order to get the five-month reserve right now.
I'm assuming your golf fees, they're a pretty conservative number.
Actually, uh, our, our, our golf fees average is in line with, uh, Forside.
Well, no, I mean your revenue projection.
The rounds.
Oh, the rounds, absolutely, I use a lower rounds than they did. They, each one, close to thirty thousand rounds, I used, uh, I think it's twenty-seven.
I think it was about twenty-two is what you used, I think, on your rounds.
Oh, wh- which budget, I mean, the twelve months or the nine months? Nine months is twenty-two, the, the twelve months that you saw earlier was twenty-seven, apples and apples. This one here has a twenty-two, which is much lower.
Yeah, until we get historical number on rounds, it's,
That's critical.
It's our best projection at this point.
Oh, you don't have that from prior years?
Well, we have some data.
We have some data from BPI.
Yeah.
How can you not have?
Well, we've got, I think you have to remember, I'm sorry, Gilbert, some of the data though, uh, members didn't always, um, sign in when they played. So, uh, so we're not really sure that those are real good numbers.
You know, I guess, we're still in the working process because we still, you know, uh, Rolando and Kobe, I almost, I almost lost it there. But, uh, we like to get some other type of programs fee in place, you know, like a year, a whole year of golf play at X dollars, unlimited type of thing, you know, those type of thing. They're not played in completely in my scenario. The only thing I have, uh, here in, it's only for those thirty-four golf carts that we have right now and is rented in place. We're making assumption, okay, they might want to play for the whole year, X dollars. But we still like to expand that, but we want to kind of walk, not run first, and find out our data, what we're dealing with and everything else, to gather the information, do some good analysis, and then start moving that, that peg a little forward. Okay? Now, last, I think I've got a few more slides. Next slide, what I did here is, okay, I have amended revenue about one-point-one million dollars. Okay, I won't take out my transfer because that's not really, uh, revenue, operating revenue. So I've take that out, so now I got a net operating revenue of nine-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars. I added a, amended expenditures of nine-hundred-and-three. The difference of that has a positive cash flow of fifty-eight thousand. And again, I played it back and I said, okay, if we let Forside or Touchstone handle it, that means, based on the contract terms, Forside, we have to come up with an additional sixty thousand dollars to make it whole. Touchstone, we pay them over fifty thousand dollars, instead of having fifty-eight, we keep up four thousand dollars. Does that make sense? You might not agree, but this, the logic, okay? So we had a decision point. You know, of course, you can say, no, we want a golf, uh, professional golf manager and we work with a cash flow and it is what it is. Or you go with what we recommend right now, allow us to run the golf course. And the basic reason behind that is that, you know, we're financially responsible on the hook, no matter which way you go with it. But I think another thing that it's, it's on our part that we can use is we can leverage other departments and control our costs. In other words, yeah, there might be some engineering, some other things that we can use internally to help progress this operation to a full-blown operation. So that is, that's a positive for the City side. Of course, we got established working capital, either way you look at it, that's my recommendation. Experience. It's our opinion that, you know, we have a Parks Director. He has seventeen years of management experience, he has turf care experience, equipment maintenance. He also managed a golf course, believe it or not, from two-thousand-and-eight to twenty-thirteen. And he also is a member of Texas Grass Association. I wasn't too sure what that was, so I didn't want to question that one, but he's a member. We also hired, I think, an outstanding head golf professional. His experience come from the quarry. I've been at the quarry, I played the quarry, I like the quarry, they run a top-notch golf course there. He has retail management, he has budget and financial analysis, especially the last few months I've been working with him, I'm pretty comfortable. And Sharmel can tell you, I will have that high standard and he admits it, so I was pretty impressed. He has a lot of experience organizing tournaments and festivals and hosts a lot of things, he has great ideas in marketing. And of course, we're in the process of recruiting right now. Last thing that we think we need for the piece of the puzzle here is a golf course superintendent. It has to be a licensed superintendent. It has to be very knowledgeable, he, he or she, to make sure this whole operation goes forward and has a key element to it. So I think you take the key elements of the golf course, you got your superintendent, you got your pro golf individual, and I'm going to throw myself in there too. From the finance side, I think we've got a good team moving forward. Now, that's your decision, but that, our, our, from a staff point of view, I think we can run this, uh, run the numbers, I'm very confident in it. But it's ultimately, it's going to be a council decision as to how you want to proceed.
It's a lot of information.
So I got some questions, um, or thoughts, comments. I agree with your analysis, it's very thorough, it's, it's not much benefit at all to hire somebody else. But also look at it as, okay, I'm a taxpayer, business proposal that I would be expecting the city to make to me. Where's the city's plan for running the golf course? Where's the business plan? We don't have one. There's no set business plan, and before I would choose as an individual to invest in a business or to give my money to someone, I would want to know details of the plan. You got one piece of it, you got a financial budget laid out, which is great, and you got some three key individuals, named, and that's it, there's no plan on actually running anything. And that's where I'm stuck.
Sure.
I agree, I agree that we don't need these two companies. But before we start managing a golf, a golf course, there needs to be some type of plan, tactical.
There's no problem, I meant Rolando's been working hard on how that's going to be deployed, so we just need to make sure y'all want it to move forward in this direction.
The way I read the ordinance is just to reject these two proposals.
That's correct.
It is not an approval for the city to run the golf course at this point. That's not what the ordinance reads.
So, uh, are you wanting, uh, the operating manual, like what time these people arrive and
Business plan?
Business plan?
How about a business plan?
All right. But I'm, I'm not following how detailed you're asking for.
Well, I've written business plans, um, they talk about market analysis, they talk about, when are going to, when is the golf course going to be open? When is, you know, anticipated tee times, what, how things are going to operate? How this thing is going to generate up to sixty, seventy-six thousand dollars of incoming here? How's that all going to happen?
It's not a problem, I mean, we, we have, we've just got to put it into a nice little folder for you.
I'm sure you'd be able to, but.
Yeah, I mean, we, we talked through that when we created the budget, uh, you know, it, it's not a problem.
Well, and maybe I'm reading between the lines, but are you saying, um, you, you're more or less in agreement with rejecting these plans? But you're not approving that we are going to go forward? You want to see that again and see more details? Or, or you want them to bring you details before you say, yes, the city will open this golf course?
Yes, because this is a resolution rejecting all proposals to manage Riverside Golf Course and declaring an effective date.
It does not give us authorization to run the golf course just yet. That's what I see too.
Can I ask a question?
Mention one thing.
Yes, sir.
That was when we were trying to help the former managers, Victor Parks Improvement, and they came up with a business plan. And what was our analysis of that business plan? Did it seem unrealistic?
I'm sorry, I apologize, I was looking somewhere else.
Let me, let me repeat that. When we were trying to help out Victor Parks Improvement, the former managers of this course, and we asked them to come up with a business plan, they did so. What was your analysis of that business plan?
My personal opinion when I looked at it is a first good stab. It's not, it could have been, I don't want to critique somebody who's really submitted something, I think that's not a fair position for me to answer that question. I've seen some good business plans and, but they took the best stab that they could.
Well, to help you out, I've seen many a pro forma that was pie in the sky and many that were more reasonable. Do you think the church was less than reasonable at times, the expectations they were getting from it? I hate to put you on the spot like that, but I saw it and I thought it was.
Let me see if I can answer this way. And looking at, uh, the marketing side, it was a little weak. On the financial side, I had little doubts and concerns of how they generate that revenue based on past experience, but that's just me. But I don't want to sit, stand up here and start, you know, putting down somebody's business plan, you know? I don't think that's my position.
The interim thing we should be looking at is we know we're going to lose money with either of these associations. As an interim fallback, perhaps we should allow it to be run, measure that, and move forward at some point. As far as a pro forma or business plan, sure. Honestly, I've seen so many of them, they're a lot of wasted effort at times. It's more the character of the people we have running it. It's the people, not the plan.
Well, and we have, I mean, we already have, uh, you know, how we'll deploy personnel and, uh, how the personnel will be assigned, where they'll be assigned. You know, since we were planning on opening in September for a short period of time, we had hired employees, we rescinded those offers, but we already had a, uh, scheduling plan, we knew what merchandise was going to be sold, we, you know, Rolando's got it set up on what's going to be sold. We've already looked at food and beverage, we have all that set up. So, uh, it, you know, like I said, we were, council had already given us permission to run it for the four months in the year. So we were already ready to do that, and we're just going to, we'll take that and just, uh, develop it out a little bit more, uh, for long term. What we've got to do is, uh, we wanted to make sure that council did want to reject these bids and didn't want us to hire one of these management companies. So that's one decision point tonight, and, uh, we are recommending that we be allowed to run it. We've got to, we, as you may remember, we ordered, um, mowing equipment, the contract was through the end of December. So we've got to get, uh, mowing contract, uh, mowing equipment ordered, we've got to get, we didn't have a, the golf course, uh, the golf cart lease that was in place was, it was a runoff from what, uh, BPI had, uh, they were letting us, we're going to, we were in the process of negotiating, extending that lease till the end of the year when the hurricane hit. So once, uh, the hurricane hit, we just asked them to come pick those carts up. We've got to get golf carts ordered, uh, so we can, uh, get ready for play. You know, you've approved the irrigation, the control system irrigation, we're getting that installed, so we've got to get back, uh, to doing that. So, uh, I mean, we have a very, uh, solid plan, uh, we just need to put it in a nice little folder, uh, and give it to council.
What will? I'd be fine with that because I, there's no other option. I mean, at times, short, I recognize all that, but I still think we need to see the plan as a council. Make sure we understand how y'all plan to make this thing successful. And then it needs to be reviewed every year as the investors hear. That, I mean, this is an enterprise fund, right?
It's being set up as an enterprise fund, absolutely, so, uh, you know, absolutely. And, you know, it's unfortunate, we don't believe we have solid numbers on our rounds, we're going to have to rebuild the business back up. I mean, it's been closed now for several months. And so our marketing strategy on getting that done, um, you know, the nice thing is, we've got people like Mr. Rush, they're calling constantly, ready for it to open back up, so we think that we've got a, a core group of people that are eager to get back started, so, uh.
Just for my clearness, y'all want a business plan before we start operation? Is that what I'm hearing? So if it's.
I'll be all right with this ordinance as it's written, just please, in the next two weeks, before the next council. I know y'all have been doing the work on it, I think you already have everything that you need, but no one up here knows the details of your plan on how it's going to happen.
It's acceptable.
Sure.
Okay. So you'll provide that to all of us? If you need an item, a city manager report to discuss it, you think?
Well, we're, we're coming back in two weeks to ask for the, uh, lease on the golf carts and the mowing equipment. So, because we've got to get that approved and going, so we can.
Can I ask a question? I just want to ask a quick question. The.
Hold on, Gilbert.
Okay. You said we want to extend it, the time, because we had approved to the end of the year, so now we want to extend the time? Do we need to amend this motion to include that, uh, please, to make clarity?
Can I?
Budget.
Because she read my mind.
Okay.
Because not only we got to come back with the, and that's why I'm, I'm working all these details in my head, it says you got your, your cart, you got your mowing. But in order to move forward with these items, uh, the budget you saw that I'm suggesting for that, for the remaining January through to September, that needs to play out. So, and that's why, you know, we can get you a business plan, but it's like, okay, do the horse comes first, the cart? I mean, I just make sure we're not hitting a, 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 go down the same code then, because we didn't have this business plan first, we're, we've got this budget amendment in front of you.
I don't think, I don't think I'm hearing, I think Mr. Walt Knight just would like to see it. I think what I'm hearing is that we're, we can move forward, we're planning on managing it. Uh, the board would, the corporate board would like to see the business.
No, that's fine, I, I, I'm with you, just, I'm thinking, okay, do I have this first or that first, that's all. I mean, I got to get things in line, okay?
In the perfect world, yeah, the business plan would come first, but we're not dealing in a perfect world. With the whole situation we're dealt with hurricanes and floods and so I'm okay.
Ms. Block, now, you're, you're absolutely a hundred percent, but as Ms. Garrett was talking about for the past four or five months, we addressed everything, I mean, the business plan, and I was there, and we had Forside Consulting, who was talking about it with us too, and help us through the process. But everything is like notes here, brains, everything else, we just got to put it in a nice package, and, and, you know, okay.
And two weeks is enough time.
I don't know about the business plan, if you don't mind, um, we need to get the, if we can get all the other things before y'all, and two, that's already on the agenda.
I started working, I don't know.
Two weeks, but yeah, if you, is that okay?
Go to the first meeting in December?
I think that's.
Okay.
Do, there goes your vacation.
No, that's not what I was asking, I was asking, okay, we have given you permission to run it to the end of December. Now we're going into the next, uh, calendar year, our fiscal year, do we need to now amend this? Because now we're saying, okay, we're not going with this, but we want to give the city the time to be able to do that, so don't we have to do that?
We're going to have to do a budget amendment.
Exactly, I was coming back in the next meeting, hopefully I present you the numbers revised, and the numbers you saw on that slide, it should mimic those changes.
Right, right, because I saw that, yes.
You'll have to do a budget amendment.
Yes, absolutely.
So that would give us the authority to let you go on?
Yes, ma'am.
Includes that authorization language, so there's no question about that going forward.
I just want to cover all those things. I just want to cover all those bases.
Okay.
Okay.
We squared away? Hey, can we kill one rumor? Is there anyone here that wants to close the golf course? Okay, I didn't think so. All seven of us want to keep this golf course, so we'll make that real clear to the public.
I want it to keep it as long as it's not a huge drain on the rest of the city budget.
Yeah. I think our, I think our actions tonight, assuming how we vote, reflect that, so understood.
I do have, looking through some of these proposals and looking at some of the capital improvement that Touchstone and Foresight had done, are we looking at any improvements that they suggested, such as driving range, et cetera, and things that can be done? I don't know if they need to be done prior to opening up while...
Our plan of action is part of the business plan that's up here is that we want to walk first, and we talk about that. The other part is like, we do want to get that, the other nine homes opened up. We do want the golf range situation open up, because I think that's a huge incentive right there. We do want to also bring in maybe more the family play and everything else, new learners and everything else in. We also want to go more into the more food and beverage, especially on the food side. We do want to move forward with that. There's things like the hot dog we talked about. Well, find out now, we have to have two or three sinks, or I don't know how many sinks we have now, but we gotta do that now. We gotta spend $3,000. That might be the crawling part. Well, I envision, what we talked about, you got that little...
Outdoor, small building.
It used to be barbecue, beat that up. Make it a night, you know, people bringing the families to eat there while people play golf or whatever. I mean, things like that. Yes, we do have ideas, but we need to lay those out. It's not gonna happen overnight.
Our first goal over these next three months is to get the golf course back open so people can have daily play.
One thing we did, irrigation system, check. That was part of long term, before hurricane.
But player development's gonna be critical.
Very critical.
To the golf course and, you know, to bring young people and...
Tournaments, everything else.
And new people, not just young, but young, you know, new golfers into golf, so that's very critical.
One thing, I don't mind, you don't mind me hopefully mentioning this, Ms. Garrett, but, you know, Touchstone is a great caliber company. You know, they've been offered maybe some, use some of their expertise and moving down the road. So we might tap their experience when it comes to different categories that maybe we lack on, maybe on the food and beverage portion of it, or things like that. So the opportunity is there that we can leverage ourselves with the private sector to help us out during the times that we need it, or we lack that experience. So they offered that, and I thought that was a very great other part.
What department will be running this? I mean, we're hearing from the city, city manager and from finance.
I'll be very involved, but the main guy is right here.
It's a Parks Division, Colby Will, with his team of support.
Okay.
For those who haven't been, this is Rolando Hernandez.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Rolando is hired as a temporary professional in a sense, and he comes with a great amount of experience, and he's impressed us very muchly and greatly on what he's been able to accomplish and his ideas. And so I wanted to formally introduce him.
Welcome.
Thank you, guys. Just thank you, thank you for being here and for, you know, giving us the opportunity to kind of run forward with this thing. I know there's a lot of kind of back and forth and little pieces that gotta fall into place, but all the, all the recommendations and things that you guys have asked for, the things that you're needing, Mr. Bocknight, things we can definitely get to you. Those are all churning in our head, and again, little ideas that we've put together just need to be on paper and get them to you. But all definitely there. Thank you.
Great, it came up with tea time, I think.
Very good. Any further questions, council? Okay, we do have a motion, right? It's been a while. All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Thank you.
E2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with this county of Victoria waiving fees for use of DeLeon Plaza for Memorial Day and Veterans Day events and declaring an effective date.
Don't move.
Okay, motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
One question. Is this permanent or just for right now?
This would be going forward for any of their events on Memorial Day or Veterans Day.
It's those two?
Just those two. As long as the county is overseeing those events. It's a memorandum of understanding with the county.
Okay.
Almost all of us on council have been approached by Dr. Peter Reeves, you know, complaining about having to pay a fee for DeLeon Plaza for Memorial Day and Veterans Day. And this is in response to that.
Any further questions? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Okay, ayes have it.
Item E3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Aetna to serve as the city's benefit administrator in an estimated amount of $129,293 and declaring an effective date.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Are there questions?
Why such a savings?
Excuse me?
Why such a savings?
Well, great question. So as part of our challenge and our strategy in managing the city's self-funded plan, we always look at ways that we can decrease our administrative cost. And so we actually had an opportunity, and I've got some folks here tonight that I'll introduce here in a second, that by going with Aetna as our network, but also our claims administrator, we get one shot, not working with a third party separate to administer claims. We're receiving the savings by doing that. Plus, we have a three-year rate guarantee that'll keep that price low for the next several years as well, so...
And I could see what 93.2% of current providers are also Aetna providers?
Yes, sir. So we did a disruption report against our Cigna OAP network that we currently have. And if you recall, a couple of years ago, we actually had the Aetna network in place, so it's going back to that network. But our offices from the Aetna standpoint are just in Sugar Land, and so they're practically in our back door. And so I've got Erin Geis here from Aetna, who's gonna be our claims representative and our account representative. And then Willis Towers Watson, we have Alicia Cannon, our benefit consultant, as well as Charlotte Moore. And so it was their creative thinking that brought this to the table and working with one shop, if you will, around a network as well as them handling our claims that allowed us to, you know, research this and see the savings. So that's what we're bringing to you tonight.
Very good, and welcome to our meeting. I hope you bought them lunch.
Yeah.
That's pretty significant.
I will owe them, so...
That's outstanding work. Thank you.
And we're just joking about owing them and buying lunch. For anybody out there that's listening to ethics.
They have very patience, so...
Just listen to ethics.
Yes, ma'am.
They are very glad to be here. I know tonight they were looking forward to it. So they see this as the opportunity that we do as well, so...
Wonderful.
Here, one question. When can we expect the new cards?
So the new cards will be coming out before January timeframe. I'm gonna look to Erin for that. So in anticipation of this moving in this direction, we've had already some implementation calls with Aetna and just talking through the timeline. Our open enrollment time period actually opens up next week, November 13th, and that'll go through December 8th. So we're gonna be sending out letters and information. Employees will be enrolling online this year, so they'll be getting into their online portal and be actually able to see what they had selected for 2017 and then the options for 2018. A lot going on in a short period of time. Yes, ma'am.
It'll be a lot of fun. I did that yesterday.
Yeah.
Didn't like y'all coming. Okay.
Very good. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Okay, ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E4 is a resolution approving the purchase and installation of field and turf at Riverside Stadium from Hellas Corporation Incorporated in the amount of $204,737, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete this purchase and declaring an effective date.
Don't move.
Second.
The motion's second, or are there any questions?
Is this on the FEMA reimbursement list?
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you.
Very good.
A question about the mound. It's got concrete under there?
Mound.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't hear you. No, ma'am, if you, if you take the two numbers, we have, there was three proposals there. There was the regular proposal price of $199 and change. And then there was a, what we are taking is a third proposal, which is 5,500, which is removable sections that we can replace as batters wear out, the batter's box, we can just lift those out, revel chrome back in there, put the feel back in. They also suggested using a concrete mound with turf over the top of it. I've spoken to the high schools and that they did not feel that that was something that they would like, and so we excluded it from the total number that you're approving tonight.
Oh, okay, because I saw that and I said, I hate to run into it.
Yeah.
What's your timeframe?
The lead time is, I mean, it's listed on the CM1 as 45 days or so, but they believe that they can get this in. I mean, it's gonna be well before UHV's got a game or anything of that nature. They, they think through around three to four week time period, but they don't want to promise us that without being able to deliver. So I'll contact them tomorrow and get a firmer date, but they know that we have to get ready. If you take this back to when we, when we first did it in 2015, the, you know, they weren't even starting yet. And so they're just gonna be removing the carpet, putting it back, which will be a quick process.
Okay. Okay, no further questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, thank you, Colby. We've got some city manager reports. Oh, yes, you are, April.
Sorry, my microphone is delayed as well. Mayor and council, Councilman Solis and Councilman Jalapaska, they do currently serve as council representatives for the Victoria Sales Tax Development Board. Their appointments will expire on December 31st of this year. They have both agreed to be reappointed, and the new appointment would go through December 31st of 2019. A vacancy was created on the board when Chris Rivera resigned back in May. His appointment was only through December 31st, so we chose to kind of just wait on that since it would be a few months for someone to be appointed. We do have two applications. Former County Judge Helen Walker and former Mayor Will Armstrong have both submitted applications for consideration. So we will need to bring a resolution back before the council at the next meeting to reappoint Councilman Solis and Councilman Jalapaska, but we would also need to have an appointment for the vacancy of either Ms. Walker or Mr. Armstrong, or if we get any additional applications, I would bring them to you at that time.
April, you mentioned Ms. Solis and Jalapaska. Did you mean to say Louis, Mr. Nite? Did I mishear you?
Mr. Nite is the president of the board. Did I? I'm sorry.
I think it's his.
It's his appointment, Mr. Nite. I'm sorry, it is Mr. Nite's appointment, but he did, he did agree to. He said we twisted his arm to be on there one more time.
So, and Ms. Solis, you want to continue, I assume? Okay, and...
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Is it wrong? Okay. So you would bring back a resolution with both those names and then a blank maybe, and we can decide, or if anyone else applies?
Yes.
Is that okay, girl?
And then Thomas would do his voting to fill in the blank on the resolution.
Okay. We got an ex-mayor and an ex-judge wanting the job. Okay, maybe someone else will step up too, you never know. Okay. What's next?
Julie Fulcom has a report on the home grant that was mentioned earlier.
A little bit of good news to end the meeting. This hopefully is our first opportunity, but not our last, to receive some disaster recovery funds. TDHCA has notified us that the home program, which rehabilitates substandard, single-family owner-occupied housing, is being funded through disaster recovery funds, which is important because that means that there is no local match. So we are wanting a consensus from council tonight that we can go ahead and pursue applying for these funds. The, there are quite a bit of stipulations. It is a federal grant, so it's kind of a cumbersome type grant. So we would like to go after and do a request for proposals for a grant administrator to actually help us with the grant administration. That grant administration contractor could be completely paid for with the grant funds if we were to successfully be awarded them. And again, what that does is it can rebuild completely up to 10 homes per reservation for residents of our community. If we have a huge response, if we go through the program and are awarded reservations, and we have a lot of homeowners that are eligible, we can actually continue to apply for reservations. We just want to keep it to 10 homes at a time. It can be difficult finding property owners that do meet all of the eligibility components, and I'd like to kind of go through those just for the public's sake. The property does have to be located within the city limits. It has to be occupied as their principal residence, so they have to have it homestead or prove that it, in some other way, that is their principal residence. They have to be current on property taxes, and then the two most difficult parts of the eligibility component is they have to have valid property ownership with a clear and marketable title, so no mortgage, and they have to have that proof of ownership, no title discrepancies or problems. So if anybody that is interested and approaches you may feel they have difficulty with that. Rio Grande Legal Aid is also a great resource, and it's, since it's a federal grant, it's a very long process. They have time to go ahead and start trying to clear up those issues. And then, of course, they have to meet the income eligibility requirements, which is make less than 80% of the median family income for our community, which is about, I think, $45,000 for a family of four. So if y'all are in agreement, what we'll do to move forward is we will publish an RFP, and then we will bring back a resolution authorizing the grant application, then, of course, the contract for the grant administration based off of the results of that RFP, and then we'll have to do a budget amendment because it is a reimbursable grant. But ultimately, the city is not responsible for any match or just very minimal soft costs in staff time.
Can't beat that.
So are you proposing, or do we have to have a grant administrator to write the grant?
No, we will actually do the application. Because the eligibility requirements are so cumbersome as far as paperwork and title and all those things, they will actually run the program. So we have a very lengthy application process in getting the applicants qualified. Last time we did this program, we had over 20 applicants that we worked through, and we ended up doing four homes because, you know, eventually everyone got kicked out except for four homeowners, unfortunately. And so that's a very cumbersome process. And then, once we have the homeowners that have been identified and are eligible, then we hire a contractor to demolish the homes and rebuild. And so the grant administrator runs that entire process.
Okay, so that we don't use a grant administrator unless we actually get approved for the grant?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Okay.
I think it looks like we're good to move forward, Julie. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, the next report is just, I wanted Daryl to do a quick update on the Harvey debris removal. We're getting closer and closer to being finished, and I think it's important that the community understand some of the steps that we're going through next. And that your packet had an older version of the debris report. Daryl has placed the most recent one that we have at your desk.
Good evening, mayor and council. The, if you look at the older one that Charmel inserted, the city manager inserted when we did the, sent out the CM1s, that's a very good representative of the reports I get on a daily basis. It breaks down everything from how much brush we pick up, how much C and D, where it goes, what's being chipped, how many leaners and hangers we cut, how many stumps we remove. So this is being tracked. And you've seen in the past, I've brought and handed out copies of the GPS system that we use to track where we picked up. We use that same system, but now that we're picking up C and D, you actually have the green dots that you saw when we were picking up all the brush. Now you have blue dots everywhere that we've picked up the C and D. So we're able to go back when a customer calls, click on that dot at that address, and be able to converse with them on the phone, let them know when we've been there or what may have been the problem, whether it's low wires. We are on schedule to be finished by the end of this month. We hope to be finished sooner in this month, and we may still be. We're signing off of neighborhoods on a daily basis. The contractor comes in, tells us that this area is finished, the subdivision is finished, the street is finished. We go out, drive that street. If there's any piles, we develop a punch list. He goes back and does those. If not, that street gets highlighted on a map in my office, and we're done with that street. It's been over two months since we've had the hurricane, so if it's not out there now, it's getting kind of late to get it put out. So looking at what I left on your desk tonight, we picked up 359,832 cubic yards total. So that's 19,358 cubic yards of C and D. So that's gonna be your furniture that may be damaged, your parts of your roof, your, you know, sheet rock, things like that, fencing. Fencing's a major part of that. That's probably 19,000. That's probably 19,000 of that. And then you've got 340,474,000 cubic yards of brush. That's a lot of brush. If you turn to page two, this is the chart I like to look at. If you look starting right around the middle of the chart, you'll start to see a little bit of yellow at the top of the blue bars. That's two of my trucks working full-time against what the contractor does in a day. So we are out there, my trucks are out there as well, and we're working to pick up C and D, and we're, what we're trying to do is hit the smaller streets where those big contract trucks can't get into. So you'll see us hopping around town. We're not necessarily clearing a single neighborhood, but we're hitting those dead ends, those tight places. You'll see us more on Navarro and Laurent and some of those main thoroughfares where it's quicker and easier for us to get to than a big contractor with the, you know, double truck trying to get to those. We are in the process, like I said, of marking out neighborhoods. If it's not out, it needs to be out, and hopefully, we haven't already marked your neighborhood off. We have trucks working north of town, south of town, 22 trucks, some days higher, some days a little lower. But we will be closing the DMS. The drop-off center will not be open starting the 13th. So if you've got something that you want to get out there brush-wise, and remember, we're not accepting C and D out there, only brush, you have till the rest of this week to get it out there. After that, it will be closed. That center will probably be closed by the middle of December permanently as the county finishes and we finish. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Daryl, just for council's sake, our trucks, we did get them certified by FEMA, so we are getting reimbursed by FEMA for those loads that they're picking up.
Yes, ma'am, we are, and our trucks are being followed by a monitor as well. So when you look at, when I look at the GPS on a daily basis, our trucks show up just like the contractors' trucks do.
Let's remind the public, for the metal goods, that's what we're doing, call in to your office.
Yes, ma'am, that's very important. We don't have a large, large volume of metals. You know, we weren't hit as bad as Houston as far as the flooding goes, where they've lost so many appliances and white goods. We have some trampolines, we have some metal posts from fencing, we have a few other things. There may be a refrigerator or something that blew due to a power surge or something. What we're asking people to do is call our office, the 485-3220. We will write down your address, your number, and when we're ready to pick those up, we will call you. Those will be City of Victoria trucks coming by. The reason we're doing that is we've got 21,000 homes or so in Victoria. We've got about 25 people on that list, and we've been advertising it now for three weeks. So it will be easier for me to pick up those, maybe 50, that are on that list than drive by 21,000 homes.
I've seen somebody drive through my neighborhood picking up all the metal out of, you know.
Well, and that does happen. I saw a truck today coming down Navarro that had fencing, you know, the pipes from fencing, had a trampoline all bent up. So there are people out there picking that stuff up because it is worth money.
Yeah.
Who's picking up the TVs, electronics?
TVs and electronics, we still use our waste management. So call the 800 number for the household houses' waste pickup, and they'll come get it.
So our plan is by the 1st of December, we'll be back doing our bulky pickup ourselves.
Yes, ma'am. December, the first week in December, we will go back to our bulky and hopefully our brush at the same time, and we will pick up where we would have normally been at the beginning of December. So if you go online and look, I believe we're going to be, well, I don't want to say it wrong, but go back and look, if we're in your area, if you're in that area that we're in in December, we will be in that area.
So with that said, really, hey, I'm leading the witness here. But we'll be back to kind of normal operation for solid waste the first week of December.
Yes, ma'am.
All of our services will be back running normal.
We will be completely back to normal.
But just like the county, we'll meet the 92% deadline.
Yes, ma'am, we are hoping, we've got till the 20th. We may be a little bit behind that depending on what we still have that's coming out now.
The mayor and I, every chance we get, are still asking for, you know, we increased our contract rate for ashbread so the subcontractors would stay in town so we could get finished within this short time period instead of them leaving. So every chance we get with a state-elected official, we're still asking for, we'd like for that to be reimbursed on the increase that we've had.
Yes, and the extra 2% is a big help.
It is.
When you're talking millions of dollars.
It'd be nice.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daryl. So the last one real quick is one that we also constantly get questions about is, when is Riverside Park going to open? And the plan all along was to, as we removed debris and cleaned up, we would open up zones of the park and not wait till we got the entire park open. So in your packet was a map showing what's currently open and then what should be open by November 18th is the goal. I think that's the orange, no, it's the yellow, I'm sorry. So Colby's here to kind of talk about that if y'all have any questions about what's opening up. And really, it's easy to think about it. We'll open up Red River and south over to the Pump House area. Special Events area will be opened up. And then the RV Park, we hope to have open up probably by that time, too. We have electrical panels that had to be replaced, and we're in the process of getting that done, so the RV Park will also open up.
And the boat ramp.
And the boat ramp, thank you, Colby.
Or the kayakers, because they've called me.
Yeah, they've called me.
Wonderful.
And the takeout at the Pump House has been fixed.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I see the periphery around the nature trails open, but the nature trail itself will not be open. I didn't figure, I just want to make that publicly known.
The nature trail will not be open at that time.
Correct, but the road along in front of it, I just want to make that publicly known that it will not be open.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good point. What's the status near the golf course when the washout, what are we going to do there?
The erosion on the right in front of the golf course from the river. I know the NCRS engineers were here last week working with Ken Gill on what strategy we would have to do to fix that. So that's going to be a long-term problem for us in the park, and it may even be to where we can't totally open the road up. You might not be able to start a McCright and come all the way through to Red River until we can get a solution to that, but we're working on that.
A lot of power to the water when it's.
The erosion is pretty bad, though. We're real concerned about the integrity of the road.
121,000 cubic foot per second.
Yes, sir. Any other questions about the park?
Yes. When are we going to have the open house with Colby's new office?
Well, they just kind of got put on the back burner.
Yeah, we just kind of moved in during Harvey, so you're welcome to come by and I'll show you around anytime you'd like to.
We could still do a ruin and cutting in essence, you know, we can plan something, so not a problem.
I think that would be nice.
It would be, yeah.
Sure, clear about, you know, where the road is and where the erosion and such, and, you know, I kind of envisioned there being essentially two parks, but if, depending on where it is and if there could be a way to get from one part to the other, maybe walking trails or something like that, I'm just saying, you know, think a little creatively depending on if we can't get traffic through there.
We've already talked about allowing pedestrians. It's going to be the vehicles on the road. So, yes, ma'am, we, you know, how can people that want to walk, run, jog, ride their bike or whatever?
Okay, great, thank you.
We're talking through that.
Until we can get the entire park open, so where the fencing goes.
Executive session's posted for two items, and I know the city manager would like to read a statement before we begin.
Well, do you need to read your executive session first? Announcement?
I don't know that it matters where we go in, but I'll go first.
The city council is going to recess for executive session on the 7th day of November 2017 at 7:40 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with the attorney on a matter involving pending or contemplated litigation or other matter in which the duty of the attorney is a governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Section